Or just a quick introduction.
Thanks, Peter. I appreciate the offer to come and speak to you folks.
Yes, we're glad to have you here and we'll be getting to that very shortly in the agenda and it is seven fifteen. So I assume, have you heard anything from Kevin? I mean, we have a full board, so.
I have not. Checking my emails right now. I have nothing from Kevin, so. Well, we can, you know, obviously, we can roll into it.
Yeah, we'll get started and if Kevin joins us, that's, that's great as always. So, Weka, if you want to count us down. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Calling the meeting to order at seven sixteen. People in the audience should know that, that we are being broadcast and recorded for the meeting. As always, the first thing on our agenda is the clerk, clerk's report. Do you have anything for tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received two correspondence from February ninth meeting. There are no new correspondence on any hearing items on the agenda.
I imagine things might be a little quiet with school vacation week. A lot of people are thinking about other things, so. Thank you for that. So the very next item on our agenda is a discussion with the Ashland Fire Department. We've had. You know, our past few years actually on the planning board have been very busy, but we're looking for opportunities as our schedule allows to kind of educate ourselves about different parts of the process. And I think probably members of the board might have some specific questions, but I think, I think really, we're looking to understand better the, the process the fire department goes through when they receive applications and what, what the planning board should understand about the fire department process. What would you, what would you like? What do you wish we knew and so that we could do our job better? Peter, do you have anything to, to add to that?
I do not, you know, I just want to say, obviously, for, for working with Lynn for the last four years, I think, you know, Lynn's got a lot of knowledge and you know, I think, you know, you know, I think, you know, we work very well together with the fire department, but like, any knowledge is, is, is a good thing. So with that, you know, I, I, I have received a couple of questions in advance. I know Kate and Marcelo responded. Those questions were passed along to Lynn already. And so I think it's just a matter of letting Lynn take the microphone and open it up, just have a conversation with Lynn about what the fire department looks at, with any site plan development.
Thanks, Peter. Well, I guess I will, I'll discuss or address the, the baller question that came up. There was quite a bit of questions about. Is, is Kate online?
Yes, ma'am.
So your question is, would any other protection, for example, a crash rated planter box be acceptable instead of bollards? The answer to that is yes. There's, there's multiple bollard designs out there. The first thing that I, I do want to disclose is that bollards itself is actually falls onto the building code. We, we, the only time we are code bollards is for oil tanks, propane tanks. Recently, most recently, solar energy walls that are placed in garages. So that, that's the only time where a ball is actually come into our code, the fire code, is vehicles in the event to stop vehicles from hitting an oil tank that is placed in a garage. Or, like I mentioned, most recently, the, the solar energy walls, the energy walls that are now being placed in garages. But anything that's in front of a building or pedestrian walk is actually falls under the building code.
So I have a, I have a question about that because I know with, with the recent application, it, the, and that's sort of how it came about. I actually started thinking about and asked if we could meet with you. Came up late about putting protection where so a car can't crash the window, which I fully support. We've seen accidents. Probably there are more than we ever want to know about. So that's an interesting point. That's not under the fire department, but thank you for bringing it up in that case. And I, I would hope that when the planning board was finished, if you didn't, we, we would have caught that, but that's another reason to have you on to kind of iron out. Making sure we, as a community and the planning board, do our best to get these things of the applicant as soon as possible. And, and so they should know the building code, right? They should know the fire code. So that may be that situation where you could crash through a storefront. Is that something that we, maybe this is Peter and all the board to look into, can we start requiring that above and beyond specific building code?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess you would, you'd work in correlation with the building commissioner in regards to that, but you know, bollards are there, they're designed to minimize damage to property and injury to people. And we're seeing a trend in the last five years of vehicles impacting buildings. For example, Dunkin' Donuts has been struck twice. Seasons Gas Station has been struck. So we're starting to see this trend of, of vehicles that are parked in front of such places that when people are, think they're reversing, they actually hit the drive and, and they go forward. And as you, as you know, in Dunkin' Donuts and, and Seasons Gas Station, the, the pathway is right in front of where people park. So the opportunity for people to get struck is there all the time. And there's an alarming statistic out there. This trend is not just solely to Ashland. Nationally, four thousand people got injured from impact of vehicles into a building. And regrettably, over five hundred actually lost their lives last year, just solely from vehicles hitting buildings. So, you know, my job is, is primarily about life safety and property preservation, so. You know, the bollards have, have come up a little bit more recently since COVID with the outside dining, the last couple of years. Where restaurants were bringing their dining areas outside so it would be safer for the residents and the visitors into Ashland. And with that being said, then we have to consider vehicle barrier protection in, in parking lots if people were going to sit outside. And that's when builders and, and construction folks got very creative with the kind of bollards that they were placing to protect the vehicle impacts. So there is, there is also sorts of styles out there. I'm sure that you folks don't even recognize when you go to Target, for instance, or Walmart, they have these big concrete balls. And Walmart is, is known for their big red balls. And they're actually bollards, barrier, protection barriers. Target has concrete balls that are in a pathway to protect the pedestrians entering and exit in the building from vehicle damage from pedestrians being struck from vehicles. So we, we are starting to see it and we're a little bit more conscious of it here in the fire departments. And when we have an opportunity to, to, to work closely with the building department, which we, we have a great relationship with them. At, at a tech review, when a, a new building is coming into town, that's when we take the opportunity to consider these life safety options for, for the residents and the visitors coming into town.
So that was sort of my follow-up related to that, that I think like safety should be number one, right? And then aesthetics, if we can get the safety and the aesthetics and what, what I found, I think, on the last case that it, I think maybe just someone said bollards and it was sort of late and nobody wanted to be creative on the applicant team or it didn't appear that way. So what I was maybe proposing is it, working with the planning board, perhaps our design review board, and maybe if we had a little catalog, it just, it, we can't insist they do any certain thing, but it might steer in the direction of not just having bollards. I think you can accomplish both and I'm glad you, I mean, that's, that was my primary question. You are open to other options. We just have to make sure the protection's there.
Yeah, I think when people think of bollards, they think of, of the big, the tall, yellow safety bollards. They're, they're more pedestrian bollards that are kind of, you know, that, that they're to stand out to, to be visible for drivers. But like I said, businesses have become very creative and as long as it, it's basically above the view, the eye line of the driver so that they can see it. And that's really the only stipulation for the height that, that I'm aware of, you know, especially if it's parked in front of a, of a, a property. When you pull in into the driving spot, you have to be able to see it. So, you know, it, three feet, two and a half feet, they, they don't have to be, you know, six feet in height. Again, it's, it's depending on, on the property and that what we're trying to protect. Obviously, it's going to be a little bit different if there's outside dining and we have people si- sitting there. A heavy traffic pedestrian walk, that's going to be protected a little bit different than an, an area, pedestrian area that it does not have high traffic volume.
So, so, so would you be, would the fire department be the correct body then to work with on those options? Or are, were you saying that the, the building commissioner would be the better, the appropriate person to, to work with or a combination of both?
At, well, yes, it actually falls under the, the building code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Marcelo, did you, you had a question that I think you had, had written in? Is that what Peter said?
Yeah, it, it was not a question. I, I just, it, it was more wanting to, to hear from, from, from the chief to about the, the fire department's approach or, or principles about electric vehicle storage and, and solar panels on roofs, which I, I know from my work that some fire departments have had issues with life safety of the firefighters in cases of fire when they tried to penetrate the building from the roof. So I just wanted to, 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 to listen what, what, what the Ashland Fire Department's approach to that is.
Thank you. Yes, EVs, electrical vehicles, solar panel, panels and energy storage walls are, are popping up everywhere in town. And they're, they're pretty hot and that's understandable. The codes, the codes are still evolving with, with the energy vehicles, the electric vehicles, the solar panels. It seems like every year the codes are changing and adapting as we get to learn more and more about these equipment and products and in some instances, the dangers. So, electric vehicles, our concern with an electric vehicle is, is the, the storage or the placement of the vehicle. We, we try to avoid or we, we wouldn't recommend the vehicles to be placed inside a garage. Obviously residential, that's, that's a different story, but a multi, a multi-story residential apartment building or an underground garage, they can create hazards, a very challenging hazard for firefighting if there is a fire with that vehicle. Because it's very difficult to extinguish a fire in a electric vehicle. There has been instance that it's, it's taken over twenty-four hours to extinguish that because of the design of the container that the battery is, is stored in, in the vehicle. Obviously, it's waterproof and it has, it's very well protected, which creates a challenge for firefighters that use water to cool down and extinguish a fire. So, believe it or not, what they're recommending now, the quickest and the best way to put out an electric car fire is actually to put that vehicle in a dumpster full of water. And that's how, that's the quickest way to extinguish it. And even then, it takes hours to do that. So our concern with a vehicle that is garage, in an underground garage or garage that's large, if it does create, if it does catch fire, it, it creates quite an environmental impact to that area. I mean, the operations, the fire operations takes hours because it's so difficult to extinguish it, which would mean there will be no entryway or, or exit of that garage. So a, as you can understand and appreciate, we would much prefer to have those vehicles char- charge outside because of the challenges that it, they, they create. Solar panels, they're, they're, they're cropping up everywhere and that's understandable. They do create challenges for firefighting. I guess it's dependent on how many panels you, you use on your roof. If you cover one side of your house, then that leaves the opposite side for us to work off of in the event that we have to do any kind of firefighter skills, open up the roof if the house is on fire. Obviously, if a house covers both sides of the roof in solar panels, it's, it makes it very challenging for us and, and highly dangerous for us to, to access the roof and do any kind of firefighting skills. Obviously, water and electricity doesn't, does not create a good marriage. So even if we shut the panels off, they stay energized for at least an hour or two. So it, it does kind of create an environment where we really shouldn't be putting firefighters on roofs that have solar panels for safety reasons. The, the energy storage walls that are popping up everywhere are also, they really are only dangerous for us if they're inside the home. If they're outside, if they're positioned outside the home, they're a lot safer for us in the event that they have a thermal runoff. The, it, it's, it's, it goes out into the environment, the, the gases. So it creates a safer environment for us rather than inside the house and also for the homeowner too. But I think, you know, the, these, these EVs and solar panels and energy storage walls are not going away. In fact, they're on the rise, so. It does create challenges for, for us in firefighting, but we're, we're figuring out, out ways to, to work through it. And we're doing everything we can to learn and go to classes and teach our firefighters the best and the safest way to work with these, this, this new type of equipment.
When you, when you do a project review, is that something that's becoming a part of those tech reviews? Or is it still outside of that for now? Is it still not, not really being discussed in those reviews?
We mainly see it in residential homes and we, we do not, we're not part of a tech review for residential homes, just commercial properties and multi-story.
But like the solar panels that go on roofs, which is happening more and more, I guess, in Ashland projects or will be.
If, if we, if we, we saw, if they were part of a commercial property or a multi-story residential, then we would, we would definitely. We would, sorry, let me just. Apologize about that. Yes, there's, there's things that we're learning. There's definitely parts of a solar system that would be more firefighter friendly. And this might be getting a little technical, but there's microinverters that could be used on solar panels that would create less of a hazard to us because it's the ability to separate the panels and de-energize the, the panels individually, which creates a, a safer environment for us to work if we have to go onto the roof. And so those are certain aspects that if we had the opportunity, not only for commercial buildings, but for residential, we had an opportunity to, to request that, that would be great for us. It's a little bit more expensive like most life safety and fire safety prevention equipment is. It's a little bit more expense to the homeowner or the builder, but it does create a safer environment for us as firefighters.
Yeah, I think in terms of the microinverters, they make it more energy efficient too. They, you can use the energy better. So there might, it might be kind of a win-win that, that we should promote.
Yeah, I think that people are, are, I, I agree. It, it does have a lot of benefits, the microinverters, but I think that unfortunately, people see the, the money of them out. And they, they kind of get turned off by that. So. Yes, I mean, that, that will be something that we, we would definitely, if we had an opportunity, we would love to request those on every home, for sure.
Other members of the board have specific questions for the deputy chief? I think my general question is, it's kind of stated at the beginning. You go through these tech reviews and and that usually happens fairly early, you know, I, I think in the, in the project. And I'm not sure, as, as a planning board, we probably really understand what it is that you're really looking for. What, what are you looking for in those, in those meetings? You know, I'm, I, I think it'd be just good, good knowledge for us to have to understand what are the things? What's your checklist when you go into those meetings? What, what should we be understanding about that process?
Yeah, well, each, each each tech review is a little different. It, it's depending on the building, the size of the building, the height of the building, the width of the building. It is depending on, on what we've looked for. Obviously, my job primarily is about fire prevention, life safety. So when, when we get to sit at tech review, those are the kind of things that, that we're looking at is, is, is it, is this building, we have the availability, is it big enough that we request a sprinkler system? Standpipe system in the stairwells that's going to be safer for our firefighters, quicker to put the fire out. A fire alarm system. Access is a huge, huge component of, of the tech review with, with new construction, especially multi-story buildings is, Ashland's not getting any bigger and it seems that obviously population is, is growing and and as a result of that, the buildings are getting taller, which creates challenges in itself for the fire department. But access, our trucks are not getting any smaller. In fact, they're getting larger. And the access in and out of these, these buildings is, it, it is, is one of the top priorities for us at a tech review meeting is, is making sure that we're able to get in with these apparatus and be able to turn around and get out of there without any difficulty. So, yeah, the fire alarm, the sprinkler access. Those, those are, those are the major things that, that we look at. Garages, underground garages. Yeah, so. Those, those are the, the, the major things that we, we think about.
Anyone have other questions?
I, I guess I have a follow-up question to that is I recall at least one project where discussion had come up about design or placement of the building. And the developer mentioned discussions with the fire department and essentially explained that changes could not be made because this would be the only way that it could be done pursuant to the fire department. And I have to say, that made me a little bit uncomfortable because I hadn't heard directly from the fire department or explored with the fire department what the possibilities of construction were. And I don't want to burden you at all, deputy chief, but I do wonder if there might be a way for us to open up sessions so that when you do have those meetings with developers, we're not hearing secondhand about what could be possible or acceptable. And we can better explore with you directly, kind of between the, the planning board and the fire department as to what is possible for a specific project, rather than sort of hearing about it hearsay. I don't know what your thoughts on that are. I don't want to burden you with kind of creating memos for us. But I wonder if there's a way maybe to communicate that to Peter and Peter can tell us a little bit more about, hey, for this project, these three variations work in terms of how the fire department accesses the building.
Yeah, no, I, I would definitely support that. Like, like I said, each, each building is, is a little bit different. And I'll, I'll give you an example of that. One are, one of the, the buildings that we frequent a lot is two fifty West Union Street. The residents of Valley Farm. Actually, no, that's, that's three sixty-nine. Waterview Lodge. We, we, we go there approximately a hundred times a year. And when we were in tech review, we realized that we would be responding there quite a lot for medical emergencies. And the, the design, we were able to put an, an, an area that we could back the ambulances right in and it was, it was, it's in an over, overhang, so. The patient would always be protected getting in and out of, of the ambulance through the stretcher. So that was, that was a, something we were able to change in the design that benefit not only the residents of that property, but also our, our firefighters, knowing that we were going to frequent that, that facility quite a bit. So, a, again, it's, it's dependent on what the occupancy is, who's going to occupy it? Is it mainly residents? Is it more commercial? What, what kind of trucks are, are going to go there? Is it going to be the ladder truck all the time with an engine or is it going to be the ambulance and the engine? So. I, I, I'm very supportive of, of working with the planning board and Peter and streamlining something that will benefit not only the residents, the visitors, but also the business owners and the new business owners that come into the town.
Peter, what do you think would be an appropriate method to, to make sure, you know, that, that happens without obviously overburn, overburdening the fire department, but to make sure that the ideas and concerns they have and ideas they have for changes, if, if like Anna says, there's three options, you know, how do we, how do we make sure we also understand that the fire department thinks that there's three options? It seems like it might be hard to have someone to ask someone to, to come for each project, you know, maybe not, that would certainly be welcome. But what would be the most efficient, I guess?
You know, I think for the, obviously, all the plans that we see are, are typically sent to the flame, to the fire department, right? You know, to, to make sure that access is available and, and all those items. I think, you know, if um. You know, I, I, I'm happy to work with Lynn to create a checklist, right? And or, or you know, and it developed kind of a template memo that says, you know, these are our options. And you know, we looked at this program and you know, we have identified these items to think about and, and to say, okay. Um, you know, when a, when a project comes in, what are your options? You know, typically the plan has, you know, one option available. Um, so I think that item is a little bit, you know, I have to kind of think about that option a little bit more. But I think it's just a matter of making sure that communication is open with the fire department between myself and the planning board. Uh, which it is, you know, to make sure that the planning board um is, is, is acceptable of an email. And or to make sure that the, you know, from the fire department or from myself. And to, to make sure that, you know, that you have confidence that the fire department and the planning office are working well together. And, and, and so I think that's where we can really kind of help promote that kind of down, down the review process.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea of some kind of, like I said, memo template or something can be developed so that um. We get into uh, that it's just a part of our process, that, that we get the direct input from the fire department would be great.
Uh, and, and I just want to reference that a- again, e- each project is a little bit different. And a lot of it is dependent on the area where the project is going to go or the building is going to go. Uh, for example, something that's right close to the edge of a street and then is that street a busy, a high-traffic street? Um, or is it going to be set back where it's not close to the road? And it's going to be easier for us to get our vehicles in, or do we have to park on the street? Uh, is a limited access. So those are all the aspects of, of, of things that we think about. And it, it, it varies depending on the location of the property. So it's, it, it would be difficult for us to, I mean, we can always come up with a checklist, but it may vary depending on, well. We gotta, we gotta do this for this project and we gotta go do that for that project. Because it's located in this area that, that is a very low vehicle traffic area. So this, it's not going to pose a problem for us to get in and out of, uh and there's ample parking uh other than. Something that's, that's right on Main Street or Homer Ave where it's, it's just driving down it on, on a regular day. And one car be parked in, on the side creates somewhat of, you gotta swing right out and go over the median just to get past it. Is it gonna, is it gonna be difficult for uh the engine or the ambulance that's going to frequent that building? Uh, quite a lot. Is, is it going to be difficult for us to get in and out of it just because of the location of it? So these are all the aspects and, and uh areas that we look at. And, and again, it's, it's depending on the location of the property and where they're proposing to build it. That can change and, and vary for us.
Right, understood.
Um, I have a follow-up on that. So this has come up, I think, on a couple different places since I've been on the planning board that. We um, kind of getting everybody satisfied that the turning rates of the trucks and that's access. And I know that comes up in the review, but is there, um, we're obviously, I'm very appreciative of like trying to get. Um, the more feedback and timely and process, but also is there something like in our planning board application? We can give um, right away those, that truck stuff. So they, so we're not bugging you later. We're not hearing it from a third-party reviewer. We get that out of the box. Like I'm, I mean, that's sort of my mission to smooth this out for everyone.
Uh, yes, absolutely, there is. Uh, when we, when we meet with the, with new builders. What we do is we give them um our swift path analysis, is what it's called. And what that is, is it, it's an analysis of our largest truck. The wheelbase, front and rear, and the turning radius of it, going right and going left. Uh, that we give to their engineer, their traffic engineer, and they insert it into a CAD. A computer-aided system and then they're able to determine if the truck, which our ladder is the largest truck. Make the swing it to enter and to exit the property safely. And when I say safely is that our trucks, uh, we, we're not, we don't break the rules of DOT rules. We can't go over the median line. We cannot go over the, the middle line, even when we're swinging out to go in or to exit. So that turning radius has to be uh checked and, and make sure that we, we don't go into the opposite lane of traffic. When we're uh driving in and out of these uh buildings and when we're in the buildings too. If we have to uh do a circle turnaround that we're not deviating from the, the lane that we're in. And, and creating uh a hazard to oncoming traffic. So that, that's called a swift, swift plant path analysis and we give that to um. It may be not at the tech review, but when it gets a little further into it, their engineers request it. And we have the schematic of, of that, our ladder truck, and we just email it to them. So that's absolutely something that, that you folks could have and uh make them aware of it.
So maybe we should consider having that part of our application. So, so it's not later and we're. Um, may- maybe by the time they get to the tech review, they already know it works, right? And it's one thing that you don't have to deal with.
Sure, sure.
Maybe that's something we can on the, put on the website for them to download. I'm not too sure how that would work, but maybe I can. Uh, Lynn and I can reach out to Paul Carf and maybe see if that, that would be a viable option.
Uh, one, one of the other things that, that creates some problem for us, uh that we find later on down the road. Uh, once buildings are up and running for a couple of years is that i- if the building starts off with limited parking. Um, then people park in areas that they shouldn't be parking and the fire lane is usually that one place um that they park. So that can create um a challenge for us, uh especially a medical emergency when we need to get in there. And get to the, the front of the building fast. Um. And this car is parked in the way. So if, if, if there's one thing that you guys could uh maybe work towards. Is that, is not allowing that to happen, the limited parking, you know, if there's, if there's sufficient parking for the building. Then uh it usually um doesn't create that parking and fire lanes or blocking areas. Uh, or making it too tight for us to bring our trucks in and out. Um, so we have to park each of them on the street. So that's, that's one thing that uh we've noticed.
Is, are there any other questions from the planning board?
I have one question. Um, and sorry, you may cover this. I was running a couple of minutes late, but. Is there kind of like a final check that you do too? I know you see these plans early and sometimes we poke and prod the designers to make changes along the way. And I worry that, you know, if they, they pinch a lane here or move something around, do you guys see the plans again before it's all over?
Oh, yes, yes. We, we review the, the plans um quite, quite a lot. Um, and then we also will, will go out to the property and eh see uh what it looks like. We'll go do a rough inspection and then um obviously the final inspection eh is, is very important. Not only do we uh do the final inspection and test the fire alarm, the sprinkler system. But uh that's the time that we're checking and making sure if the building has gas, that all the meters, there's ballons and protection, vehicle protection in front of those. Meters, the fire lanes, that there is fire lanes, um that they're sufficient, they're in the right areas. Access to the fire department connection for the sprinkler system. Um, all those things, uh simplest thing like a dumpster has to be, the code says it has to be ten feet from the building. Um, making sure that, that, that's done. Uh, mulch, you know, believe it or not, mulch has to be eighteen inches away from the building. So that eh in the event that it doesn't add to, to the fire load. So those, we, we do have a check-off lease uh list. Um, that is required prior to giving the occupancy to the building owner.
And you're also looking at it prior to and approving it prior to the issuing of the building permit. Is that right? When final drawings are submitted?
Um, I, we just reviewed the fire alarm and the sprinkler. Everything else is through the building code.
Okay. Any other questions from the planning board? Um, i- is there anything else that we didn't cover that you feel like we should know or you're, you're always welcome to come back? Um, and.
Well, I appreciate that and, and I do, do want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for allowing me to come and speak. Um, hopefully I, I was able to answer some of not all of the questions and, and if you have any further questions, please just. Uh, give them to Peter and I, I'd be happy to come back and, and answer any questions that you guys have. Uh, even if it's as silly as, that's not my code, that's somebody else's code. Uh, but I, I would be more than happy to do that and I, and I would be delighted to, to work with you, you folks. Uh, and streamline something uh for the beginning stages, tech review. So things maybe um are a little easier for businesses coming into town and construction companies. Um, yeah, absolutely.
That we, that would be great. We really appreciate your time this evening and look forward to working more closely with the fire department. On these, on these projects that come before us.
Great.
So, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you all. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
All right, um, so next on our agenda this evening um is start of public hearings. And um, we're. Well, we'll just go on to the, the first one, which is we only have two public hearings listed on our agenda this, this evening. So the first one um is nine forty-nine to forty-nine Homer Avenue. Site plan and special permit application was continued from January twenty-sixth. Um, Peter, can you just give us an, an update on this project and um what, what's going on with it right now?
Sure. So in a timely conversation with Lynn, uh Captain, uh Deputy Chief Lynn, um we had a tech review. And uh the fire department has outlined some uh concerns regarding circulation and, and uh traffic, not circulating, but not track. Excuse me, not traffic, but access ingress and egress to the site through their uh vehicles and or uh apparatus. Um, and so the, the application team is, is making some changes on that plan. Um, and so the application team has not yet resubmitted anything to the fire department. Obviously, I'm working closely with Lynn and, and, and Captain Chief, uh Keith Roby. Um, but after a tech review meeting, uh nothing has evolved uh in that instance. So we are um at this point kind of waiting for a revised plan. Uh, and hopefully that should be back in, in, you know, a week or two. So it could be, the application has sent in a continual email request. And uh they'd be looking to continue this hearing to the next planning board meeting. Um, excuse me. Uh, we'll pull up a calendar, uh but that would be on March ninth. And I believe that's appropriate and uh a- as the application team looks to kind of iron out uh issues with the fire department.
Be- before we continue that, there's just a couple of things, um, and I, I don't know if this, this order matters. Um, but you had put together a memo, Peter. I, I assume everyone got it. Um, as we start to outline things for the design review committee and our thought on this one from the last meeting. Was that we, we, the planning board wanted to um look at the project one more time. Um, especially, you know, after getting some of these, especially after the tech review, when it comes back to us, because there may be changes then. Um, in order to um just have more of our questions answered. Um, before we kind of officially hand it off to the design review committee. But you had summarized um in this kind of a draft memorandum, um. Right, that this hasn't, this hasn't been released yet. Is that right, Peter?
Correct. That's just a draft.
Yeah, a draft.
Uh, we asked to follow up with uh that kind of um, obviously I use the template. Uh, that we used for the last project. And so I just kind of changed in the addresses and I kind of put some of the, the comments that we wanted. And I just wanted to get that out to the board um as soon as possible. So I, I was able to do that. And, and like I said, that's a draft and I think it's appropriate to kind of see the project uh as revised. Um, and then kind of take it from there.
So, so my recommendation would be that when the project comes back before us, we, we have this before us as well. Um, if there's any, um, if there's any additions or corrections on it, please feel free to, to send it to Peter. We can keep this as a um working document. And then after that meeting, we'll finalize this list and then hopefully be ready, hopefully be ready at that time to send it to the design review committee. If, if the board feels that's the right move. Um, so that's what this is about. And the other thing is that we wanted to, again, um, don't know the exact date, depending on the weather. Don't want it to be a day like today, but to do a site walk uh for this, for this site as well. I think those have been really helpful in the past. And that would be obviously a combination of um planning board, it would be uh open meeting, so anyone could attend. But planning board and design review committee um together to be able to, to do a site walk. Um, I thought I would use the data that I gathered um about retreat dates as kind of a. Um, a place to start about good times to schedule um a, a site walk. And obviously, there's no way we're going to find a time where ten or twelve people can make it. Um, but I think applicants are usually open to having, to doing a separate site walk if, for those who can't make it. So we'll look to um, I'll work with Peter to send out a, a doodle poll or something like that to try to get a site walk. On the calendar. If you've had any, if you've had any general changes in your count, in your schedule since we, since we had the last retreat. You know, I, I can't meet on Tuesdays anymore, you know, just, just send those off, you know, to me and Peter. So that we at least have a starting place about how to schedule, um, schedule a site walk. So. Little tricky right now because it, it, these have to be in before five thirty, right, when it gets dark. So, um, which is tricky as well. You're that, either at that or on a weekend. So um, that'll likely make it uh, likely make it tricky as well. So. So, okay. Does anyone have any questions about that project before we do continue it? Then on that note, I will make a motion to continue the nine to forty-nine Homer Avenue site plan and special permit application. To Thursday, March ninth at, what, seven fifteen, right? And a roll call vote?
Anna Testmaninsky, aye.
I say, I wanna aye.
Captain Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is continued until March ninth. Okay. Second public hearing on the, um, on the agenda is ten to sixty Main Street, special permit and site plan review. This was continued um from January twenty-sixth. Um, Peter, do you wanna introduce that project?
Sure. So I'll reintroduce the project. Uh, this was continued from January twenty-sixth. And at that meeting, I own the planning board, uh requested, uh, you know, some different, a different option uh from that. Um, and so just to introduce uh the applicant again, Mr. Rich Gordon is the property owner. Mr. Scott Richardson is the architect. Mr. Craig Seymour is the economic, uh, the economic development. Um, analyst and professional and Mr. Joe Anthony Alis is the attorney, representing, representing their project. Uh, who is not on camera is Mr. Jordan Connors, who is the civil engineer. Uh, but through uh Mr. Rich Gordon, the owner, um, there was a revised, I'm going to say rendering, aerial rendering. Uh, that was presented, uh, which actually was submitted and was uh uploaded and sent out to all planning board members. Uh, and so at this time, I would just hand it, hand it over to Rich and his team. Uh, I'm happy to share the screen with anybody who would uh want to uh speak and present. Um, and so please let me know who would like to uh, uh, share the screen and, and Rich, I'll, I'll give you the reins. Yeah, you're on, you're on mute, Rich.
Sorry about that. Um, I think Scott's gonna want to share the screen, but um I'm gonna kick it off with a little intro. Um, hello, everybody. It's nice to see all of you again. As you know, we're coming back to the board this evening with a drastically restructured plan for ten through fifty Main Street. We appreciate and have taken very seriously all of the concerns raised, along with all of the input. With regard to what the town planning board would like to see implemented on this project. I do feel that we've now captured much of what has been suggested, especially in regard to opening up as much area as possible. For all in the community to be able to take in and enjoy. I'll let Scott Richardson go over in detail all of the specifics as far as how this new design can accommodate. The greatest use of space and create an interactive environment. Um, I'd also like to take this opportunity to touch upon the financial aspect of this project. Since we began this journey almost. Since we began this journey almost three years ago now, so much has changed in the economic landscape. We are current currently facing a number of challenges, including increased material cost, supply chain issues, labor shortages. And the current high interest rates. As mentioned. This is, this new improved plan incorporates much of the feedback we've received from this board. And members of the Ashland community, and as a result. The finished product will be a beautiful new destination community for all to enjoy. These improvements have come at a hefty price. As you know, this project needs to be both acceptable to the town. And economically feasible for me and my development team. Which includes partnering with a national development company. Who has a deep experience and expertise in projects just like this one. To ensure this project is developed into its full community centric and beautiful potential. While still being an economically feasible project. At this time, we're willing and able to provide fifteen fifteen percent affordable housing. After much consideration, negotiation, consulting with industry professionals, we feel strongly. That this is a fair percentage that's advantageous to all parties involved. And will most importantly allow the project to move forward in all of its glory. I'll now turn the mic over to Scott Richardson, who will go through all of the dynamics of this new plan. And if time permits, Craig Seymour will also give us a refresher. On the positive impacts of the project as as it's currently being presented. Lastly, Joe Antonellis will give us a closing statement on behalf of our team. Thank you all again for your time this evening, and I will now turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Rich. Um, good evening, everybody. Um. Peter, do you, do you want me to share or am I able to share?
Well, now co-host and you you're happy to share.
Okay, great. Let me get that set up. Does everybody see that? Yet?
Yes.
Now, okay. This was a delay lately, so. Uh, and and as Rich had mentioned, uh, we basically kind of re. Reviewed um previous kind of that work session and actually several of the working sessions. And also a lot of the comments that were made at the. Uh, last meeting. And so we uh. Kind of sharpened our pencils.
Uh-oh.
Oh, looks like we lost him.
Oh, no, Scott's there. We, but he's muted.
Yes, I've had this problem before. Peter, maybe uh.
I can share the screen.
If you wanna share the screen, um, that would probably be better.
Okay, I'm sorry, just uh hold.
No, that's, it's something locally here, so.
Okay.
But anyway, um, we, you know, we understood the uh. Comments and took them very seriously and also some of them were reflective of previous discussions we had had. So what we did, we basically uh opened up the site. Um, to create kind of a courtyard uh entrance area. So one, one, you know, the middle. Uh, building. Formerly known as number forty has essentially been eliminated. And uh, so ten and twenty are still the same. Uh, but thirty and fifty, we'll probably renumber them, but thirty and fifty now are. Kind of uh either L-shaped or U-shaped buildings. Which basically create a courtyard in the center. Uh, and also ha- provide a lot more along fifty, a lot more open. Uh, plaza area where there could be seating. And potential kiosks and some more landscaping to create more of a space and a destination. There that also then connects and relates to. The potential for dining along Main Street and certainly also connect to the corner spot. Uh, basically, the unit count is approximately the same as before. Uh, the commercial space has actually increased a little bit because we. Have gone back and taken a closer look at twenty. And determined that it makes more sense to have uh. The lower level of twenty be primarily more commercial uh space. And potential storage for the apartment unit own uh renters. So that all of our, and and again, we have a larger podium. Uh, because of the way this now is laying out and as Rich said, that. Certainly has had an increase in the overall cost of the project. So we have a larger uh parking area kind of below uh both thirty and fifty. One thing that also occurred is we are able to align. The entrance into the the common area and the space between thirty and fifty. Pretty much aligned it directly with Pleasant Street. Uh, so that controlled intersection with the light will be uh much more visible and and safer. And provide uh better access and egress out of the the space in the center there. Um, we are also anticipating, and this is one thing that kind of came up. At the last. Discussion because we actually have lost some square footage because we've kind of. Lost a building and then kind of truncated it onto the other two buildings. Uh, we are anticipating that needing to go up on a fourth floor. Uh, primarily just on number fifty and only for about uh. Potentially a half of uh. Half of the building. So um. To get to maintain our two hundred unit count, if you will. Uh, we're also anticipating trying to create a kind of a historical. Room, if you will, over in uh building ten. Uh, kind of being the uh kind of most iconic and visible building as you come around the corner and also having uh. Proximity to the Ashland uh Historical Society building there. So we're hopeful that a space within that building will be kind of a historic. Uh, space, uh, room for any memorabilia and telling the story of the mills over the years. Uh, and having it as a uh, you know, kind of a. A unique attribute to the to the property. So a couple of other things that came up were were identifying or having more iconic uh elements at the entrances. Uh, so both at fifty and thirty, uh, we are anticipating uh having. You know, kind of uh granite tower elements. As you recall, we had one of those at fifty at the south end. What we're proposing uh conceptually is to have these two. Kind of granite tower elements framing uh the entrance. Into the common area, so you'd have one of those on each of those buildings. They probably will be a little bit different from each other, add some variety. Um. Let's see, a couple of other things that have come up. I think we're gonna be able to also, while we have more parking. In the courtyard area, we also are able, I believe, to have more green space. And uh common areas to, again, create more of a uh, a sense of space, a sense of identity. And also kind of a focal point for the complex. Uh, the facades are also broken up more because before we had. Kind of the connections between the buildings and what we're thinking is basically eliminating the uh. Those retail connectors between. Ten and twenty and between twenty and thirty and having them more as open. Uh, areas that could again be seating areas or congregation, congregate areas. Uh, because we have increased the commercial space under twenty. We essentially aren't losing any space and then we also have. The. Um. These two buildings is really being more um. True to kind of how they were without any additions or connections between them. So that's. Kind of in general, uh, the overall revamp of the scheme. Uh, and highlighting some of the uh key design revisions that we've incorporated. Uh, we haven't really taken it much further than this relative to the exterior because obviously we need your input. And comments uh that this is moving in the right direction. And then we know we can provide the imagery to support uh this particular concept. So I'll leave it, uh, leave it there.
All right, thank you. Um, and. Obviously, in just a second, once people kind of collect their thoughts, so the. Opening this up uh uh to the planning board for comment, um. I just wanna start out to say I really appreciate the um. That. The the looking at this in a different direction. I think this is what, um, I'm not saying this is the answer, but. That we were asking you to take a different look at it. And um, I appreciate that you're giving us something else to consider. There's obviously pluses and minuses, is there? Any second version on a project? Um, but at least we have material to discuss, and so I I thank you for those efforts. Um, so with that said, I'd like to open it up to um. To the planning board for any questions, comments.
I have a few comments, Tricia.
Please.
Uh, well, I I I I want to second what you just said. I I really appreciate uh, Rich and and Scott. The the effort that has been made here to um to look uh a a different way of doing this. Uh, I think um just about every single one of the of the of the moves that that Scott described. Uh, are definitely going in 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 the right direction. I think this is a a major improvement. Uh, not only in the in the in the sense of. Of the public space that creates off of the street, which really is what a lot of us were 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 talking about. But uh, the the fact that it's being developed with buildings that are not symmetric, that that are disconnected, it's a lot more. Rich in terms of the urban uh impact and and the opening of the site to more pedestrian areas. Uh, is is something that we we have seen in other projects. We've we've seen it in. Uh, develop really nicely on 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 Pond Street, and I think this now is starting to create. Place where really uh all 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 the residents of of Ashland are are really invited to to come in and participate, so I I really welcome that. Um, the the. Uh, the the one area that 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 I would, uh, and I I think all the ideas. Uh, even the markets on the on on the towers that that Scott was mentioning, uh, that that all seems. Like a great approach, especially if some of the granite is is being reused. I like the the idea of of buildings that are all different and different. Elevations because that is kind of the nature of what the mills were, so I I I I I guess I. I applaud that. The the one, the one thing that I would uh only add to to try to evaluate further, uh, which was. Part of the of the first discussions is the 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 inception of the project as you come from from the waterfall. Uh, the 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 first area, which is still devoted to 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 parking in front of uh building number ten. I I think that 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 spot and that maybe with a with a nice landscape approach. Really would want to be, that is the welcoming view of the town as you make that turn. And I think uh I I I think that would be much better for the entire project if it was uh. Something of a of a pedestrian and and landscape area for to for the enjoyment of the of the. Resident of the of the commercial spaces on on building ten. I think that 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 beginning. It would be kind of the beginning of that pedestrian area that starts in 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 a in a very special point for in front of a very special building. And travels all the way through until it opens up at the end. I think this it it would be a uh like a beginning and an end, and I think. It uh it it would address the street from beginning to end much, much nicer. I I I also like a lot the the alignment with with the traffic light. I think it's a much more successful approach for for how it's going to feel and how it's going to operate. So overall, I'm 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 very happy that that this has been explored like um this way.
Marcel, just a clarification question. When you're talking about the landscaping um around building ten. Were you talking about more landscaping at the lower levels so that when you're seeing the long side of building ten on your way into town? Uh, I wasn't sure where you were talking about maybe developing. Um, a le- a more landscaped view unless I misinterpreted that.
Uh, uh, I I wish I could um mark this up though. Um, I I I guess, I. I I guess, well, let me try, maybe I can. I I guess what 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 I was referring to, I don't know if you if. If you guys can see what 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 I'm.
Yes.
I'm doing that. So I, what I see is that the the this place. Uh, as you, as you come from, from, from the, from the uh waterfalls here, this is the first thing that you see. So I I I think that if this could be combined with with what's happening, uh, and I was referring to how. These buildings from from the other side, there there's a lot going on here and and now is. E- entering into the courtyard, which is great, but 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 the way these these. Is connected, it would be a a a perfect terminus here, if you will, with with an area that is, yeah, it would be like a sunken plaza. It could be kind of. Uh. The the work uh in connection with 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 this building, but is the first thing you would see and and it would connect the entire pedestrian. Um, uh, hardscape of the project and connect all the buildings together with something really, really wonderful uh at the beginning, so that that's what I was suggesting. Something like that, if if something like that could be explored, uh, maybe there is some parking, but but not just like an asphalt. Uh, plaza for cars. I think it would be more for people, it would be better.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted you to, for that to be clear.
Okay.
All right, uh, anyone else from the board?
I mean, I'll, I definitely had a similar response that I feel like we're finally having. The kind of conversation that I think we've been wanting to have for a long time, so I appreciate. That the planning board's thoughts are being heard. Um, I think it's a really exciting idea. To create that public space and and welcome the public into into it. Um, and I definitely would would like to see those renderings that, you know, obviously you guys didn't. Want to start that work until you had some feedback, but I'd like to understand the context of that. Um, as far as the four stories on building fifty. Um, and the preservation of first two buildings, just to kind of visually understand what you had in mind. Um, and I I very much appreciate Marcella's point because I didn't think about that side. I I started to think more about. And and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say there's some property on the other side closer to. Um. The corner spot. That you, I think during the site walk, were open to discussing, making more public. Kind of, I think right now it's more covered with with trees um on this specific rendering. Um, but I I definitely wanna kind of explore more of that idea of opening up that green space to the public. The green space that we have not discussed. I think it's right on the on that riverside of building fifty. Um, but I I very much like Marcella's concept as well, that there's that green, less parking, more green. Coming um, coming across from the Historical Society as well.
And are you talking about the green like in the curve of the water there, is that?
Yes, yeah, I I have some recollection during the site walk. That Rich had mentioned there's some potential there for him to grant the town some access point. Or some public land there or potential for a conversation. Um, you know, I don't know if that's still on the table for discussion. And how we might connect those two two things together with this project.
So I'll chime in for a second. That that's still gonna be very much on the table. We just didn't wanna take really kind of that deep of a dive into it at this point. Um, but there is potential, um, you know, for a land donation there. And yes, uh, Marcelo, if you're drawing that even further, all the way back over to that other street, there's. Um, almost seventy thousand square feet total. Um, so there's quite a bit of land in there that, you know, as this progresses, we will be talking to you about that. Um, and Marcelo, to your point over at number ten. Um, I I I think you are hitting on something good there and there is some room for us to. Develop that further. In addition, there's that piece of land over there. Um, that comes across from the waterfall. Right now, it looks like there's one big tree drawn in there. Um, I don't know if you can move your cursor down to that area.
That that's not me doing. I don't know who's doing that.
Thanks, Peter. Um, so I I think that that right there is something that could be. You know, kind of an exciting spot right there to develop with some, you know, brick paver patios and walkways and sitting area. And really incorporate that into the waterfall. Um, again, that would be part of uh this land donation concept. So, you know, at at this juncture, I don't think we really wanna get too far into that. Um, but that is a potential and it's absolutely on the table to answer your question, Anna.
Then, I mean, I I'm not sure why it's not part of the discussion, just because it's so in integral to the to the site, right? Um, and it can give you a lot of flexibility as a developer to have those conversations. So, um, I'm just kind of thinking about that. So um, I'm just kind of thinking about that already, because I think I think what you're presenting. I can't help but start to think that way, because what you're presenting is creating those. Those public spaces that are right next to those chunks of land. Um, and and there might be wiggle room there for you to do what you need to do. While maintaining public, public uh appreciation of the space and honoring the history and and the building.
Yep, absolutely. No, it 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 is on the table. I think that there's just some civil um and environmental uh. Things that will need to be addressed before we can, you know, develop that further. And we can let George Connors talk about that maybe at a later date, but yes, those are potential areas to to further this as well.
And and to kind of phrase it a different way, you know, Marcella's idea essentially almost removes, I think, if I'm hearing it right. Is his visual, he's visualizing that area in front of bu- building ten being much more. Landscape and green and pedestrian rather than parking. So that leaves the question of what happens to the parking, right? Where 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 does that go? Um, so is there other land that you own right next to the property where that could go? Um, and those are the kinds of things I'd like to start exploring and better understand.
Well, we're just, right now, we're just focusing on the areas that that we know that we can work within. Uh, so we're within the perimeter that is usable um at this time. So.
Marcel had a follow up.
Yeah, you know, I I believe because what Anna brought it up, but I believe we had talked at the beginning that there there was already a surplus of parking on this project as as conceived. Um, and may doesn't have to be like uh no parking at all in that area. I'm just saying that it's worth. Thinking of celebrating that building in a way that is a little that 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 is more pedestrian and and less devoted to cars and in in a way that that is very. That could be very pleasant. And and how how I don't know.
And and at this time, we don't know if that surplus of parking still exists. Obviously, there there've been big changes, that might have been big changes in the parking as well, so. Um, so those numbers may may still need to be explored. Um, so. Kevin Deepak, Kate.
Um, yeah.
Jump in it all not don't have to, but.
Um, we talked about saying that, you know. The economic change and they they will continuously change. That's the nature of the world anyway. But we have um apparently a shortage of commercial space in Ashland. We've been told that. I guess I haven't heard it myself, but from another applicant talking to our economic development director. We know that um there's significant reduction in commercial space here with your plan, so. I mean. I. What what I'm hearing is that it's it's a model that suits like a national developer to have this two hundred units. But I I don't know that that's in the best interest of like Ashland. Is there any way to? Um, kind of explore the commercial, which typically is is um obviously less use of services, right? So we're gonna get two hundred apartments and then um residential usually kicks actually uses more service than kicks and taxes. And I mean, I personally, we've heard very, very much from the community about. Um, specifically businesses there. I. I know um Mr. Seymour is on, and that's what he does for a living, but I. I don't know. I I mean, I I know we don't control the economics either at the planning board, but I think it is under our purview and we keep hearing. Um, bringing in a national developer and two hundred apartments. I think we have to. At least ask the question, is that the only answer?
Uh, so Catherine, um, there's actually more mixed-use space in this plan right now. It the numbers. Are going up slightly, and we haven't been able to define the exact number at this point, but. Everything under not under twenty is gonna be a mixed-use space. Um, you know, we've been. Basically told from the get-go, thirty thousand square feet is what the town is looking for. Um, and we are still accommodating that. There's no cut in mixed use with this plan here. But again, and we brought this up before, there there is a number. And that is a a two hundred unit number, and it may be give or take a few. Um, but less than that, the project isn't bankable, and you know, we do need to. Be able to achieve a certain amount of units to make that happen.
Okay, but this is just to clarify, this is substantially less commercial space than currently exists, and I I'm not sure. Um, the thirty thousand where that came from, but I think we did start the very first meeting saying. Um, that that it's the first time in the planning board, so. If there were kind of some agreements made, I don't know that they are on the plate right now. Economically, but as far as someone saying thirty thousand square feet, I have never heard that from the planning board.
Sure. Um, so I think you you've been through the building, uh, Kate, um. So the bulk of the square footage that is in this building is really back of the house, industrial uh. Construction, automotive, there's a mattress. Storage facility, there's an aquarium. So this, a lot of the space here, you're thinking of commercial space. Which I think you're thinking of offices, restaurants, retail. That is not what is in this, that's not what is in the bulk of what is in these buildings. There's actually probably less than fifteen thousand square feet of actual commercial space in these buildings. What we are proposing is actually to double that square footage, which. If if somebody's saying there's a lack of a commercial square footage in Ashland, then we're very excited about that. Um, but there's no reason for a mattress warehouse facility or a mechanical repair shop. Or a shower door manufacturer to be in this building, because that's. Basically taking up five thousand square feet with two employees and not servicing uh the public. I mean, obviously, they provide, all these companies provide what they do very well, but. I think, again, if you're looking for the commercial um kind of uh. Matrix or commercial uh excitement that you're envisioning, we are actually. Proposing hopefully rightfully of doubling the actual commercial space. That will provide the uh uses and businesses that will really contribute to. The that the vibrancy of this development.
I I think there's some. Um, commercial maybe with retail, and I think commercial, so so what, I mean. This is substantially different than was brought before, and I agree with other members' comments in the right direction. What we're doing is bringing two hundred, so that's at least two hundred cars downtown, but potentially four hundred. And I knew you talked about a shuttle to the train station, and that's great, but. People have to get in their car to go shopping. They have to go in their, get in their car to get almost everything, and so like. A development that would actually bring things, the live, work, shop. This isn't, this isn't it, you know, and and maybe we'll never get that, but I think I I. I would be remiss to myself, I think, if I didn't talk about that. And at least bring that up.
Well, well, I mean, Kate, as I as I as I'm listening to you, I keep thinking about. About the potential of this project, right? And and one of the things that's jumping at me is. By opening it up and talking about the vibrant. I think what Scott is referring to, and and I understand there's a judgment call being made, what kind of business is quote-unquote vibrant can be. An interesting conversation, right? But I think he's making an interesting point, which is. That this new project is creating a a certain kind of energy that may shift. The type of business that we're gonna have downtown, and we as a community need to understand that, right? And what does that mean for the businesses currently there? And what does it mean for Ashland? But also, what does it mean for downtown? Because you're gonna have a different kind of energy downtown. And we don't have a parking garage. We don't have adequate parking, in my opinion, for the kind of vibrancy that you're envisioning here, which. If we're gonna have that, maybe we should. We should start having conversations about those other properties nearby that you're thinking could have viability. I mean, maybe there's space for a garage to be built here nearby, so that we can. We can support the kind of vibrancy that that we're envisioning here.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's. Yeah, there's so many. Different factors here. I mean, obviously Kate is correct. This thing is filled with businesses right now, and many of those businesses. Certain types of businesses, this wouldn't be the facility for them any. If this project is realized. That said, those aren't the businesses that people walking along the street walk in for any reason, like it's a like a very large space with no employees. Or very few employees. So it is making judgment calls. I mean, this is this is zoned industrial. You know, so that kind of mattress storage or, you know, whatever, it's zoned industrial, you know, would we want in. A purely industrial building here was that will be, you know, I I'm not sure, right? Um, and obviously, this goes in a different direction. So there's those kind of um questions. I think there's. You you know, every once in a while, someone um mentions a project, and I don't have them in front of me now uh in another town. That was an old mill building or an old warehouse building, and they. Renovated it, and it's just all filled with businesses, you know, and I don't know if that's um if. Though that is true in actuality or not, I'm not sure when those projects were done and. What the econo- what the climate was at that time, you know, or all the kind of financial things that are just out of my realm of expertise, but I think that's. I think that argument keeps coming up that, well. If if we saw it over here in another town, why can't we have this thing just all the same shape, the same size, but all filled with businesses, right? I I can't answer that question. I'm just kind of. Putting out there, I think, what what is in people's, sometimes what is in people's minds. I think the other two things which are. Unknowns at at this point um that are that are big questions that will need to be addressed are. The issues of scale and bylaws um that need to be looked at more closely, density. Um, and affordability, because that is also, it's certainly none of these, the amount of commercial, the amount of residential, the amount of green space. The amount of affordability, none of them is the only question. They're all just a part. Of the question and the answer. So all of those things will need to be kind of. Looked at, which to me means this is obviously still, it's all still evolving, but at least um. There's um, there's, like I said, there's something new to discuss here, and I'm I I appreciate appreciate that. So it doesn't have all the answers. Do we know all the answers? Absol- absolutely not. But I think.
I was, you you bring a a good point, uh Tricia, but but the the. I guess the the way I'm I'm looking at 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 this, in in the core of a downtown. Um, less than half a mile from a train station. Uh, the 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 there couldn't be a better candidate for such a large place that is in really ugly shape right now. To to be a mixed community, because the the vibrancy. Really is is acquired when 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 it's always uh this activity all the time. Uh, if 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 it was all commercial, let's say, like 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 you mentioned. Um, that 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 is a uh an entire lot that would be dark after a certain time, that would be empty in in some. Um, you know, on the weekends, when you have a mix of, that that's why mixed communities are are it are being encouraged. Because the people that live there live in downtown and and interact with with the downtown. Uh, they live there, and so there's people always at at all times, and I think there's something to say that 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 aside. And this location. Adjacent to the river, adjacent to Main Street, close to the train station, it's it it seems like the right program. What's being proposed in in my view.
And I I guess where I'm going with this, Marcel, is I agree with that. I see that this is really an exciting idea to bring this vibrancy to downtown. But the communities I'm imagining that I visited that have this kind of vibrancy, there's usually. There are parking garage or massive public lot within walking distance, which we lack in Ashland. So wha- what I'm suggesting is we're we're essentially building something without proper infrastructure. And we should have that discussion as a planning board, and and this de- this developer is saying that there's. Private land that he has nearby that currently there's some issues with and we cannot discuss. But if there's a way to make that part of the discussion, we could fill in those gaps in infrastructure. Where this kind of project could actually be viable, because I don't know about you, but if we're gonna have that commercial space there. I want it to be super viable. I want this to be a destination. I want people to take the train to Ashland. And to want to take that shuttle and come come into this area and make it a viable economic success, right? That's what I would want. Um, but there's no. Right, but I'm I'm not sure we have the infrastructure for it.
What do you mean by I I get?
I I'm not sure we have adequate park, I don't.
Uh, I I I'm not, I I'm trying to understand what you're saying, whether we we don't have adequate infrastructure. I mean, there 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 are towns, like if you go through the middle of Welfley, for example. This is just one road. There's tons of tons of business. There's no, it's, yeah, it's 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 tough to park, but it's pretty vibrant. Uh, that it there's not a, I mean, the the perfect, and a parking garage, I definitely, I I hope we don't get there, in my view. But it that that's what you what you get when you go to a shopping mall. You know, you have a massive parking garage and people go inside and and shop. This is, this is just a part of an urban development and and. Uh, if there's adequate parking that complies with the zoning within the property, which all we've heard is that there is. That is the infrastructure that supports that the project. I'm I'm not sure that we're lacking.
Hey, help uh through the chair?
Please.
I just wanted to have some clarity, and perhaps Rich was gonna chime in too. Anna, I don't understand what your. Comment was about some other private property. Um, there's, this is the property. We have seven acres of land. Uh, about six or five and a half of it is what is developed currently. And with the uh restriction and the setbacks from the river, that is all we are developing. And able to develop. The other property that maybe was talked about earlier. Is basically along the river that has, that is not developable for any use other than potentially recreation. And that's what the property is that Rich was talking about. That would be part of a discussion on if in fact the town is interested. And uh to evaluate those properties to the south and to the north of this property. That are not developable, that could be used for recreation or trails.
Yeah, no, I.
Talking about, but I don't.
Absolutely. No, I think that's a helpful, that's a help. Helpful clarification, that it's it's not anything that can be developed, period. Understood. I think that's helpful to clarify.
Um, though we don't have a, well, first of all, are there any other immediate questions from the planning board? Anyone who hasn't? Spoken that would like to? If if not, I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a huge crowd with us this morning, but or this this morning, this this evening. Um, yeah, it's been a long day. Um, but i- if if not, I'll open it up to. Public comment. Um, Peter, do you mind managing that?
Nope, I'm all set.
Thank you.
Uh, there's only one hand up right now, and that would be Mr. Mark the Sony. And Mr. Mark the Sony, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself with your name and address.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. Mark the Sony, forty-nine Hawthorne Road. What I'm looking at is a lot better pronounced plan in front of me, site plan. And I would like to understand that um commercial mixed use. Even I would understand that kind of mixed use more than commercial. Would help better to understand what's going on for 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 the site. And for the uh landscape and and outside and overall site plan itself. Looks a lot more professionally understood. But my main question and saying is um. That uh mixed use be a lot more better. Thing, things to have inside than commercial, because mixed use, you can put in more mixed use than commercial. Inside of a building. But mixed use is meant to be marketable rated, marketable employed mixed use. Commercial has a harder time getting targeted employees for commercial. But mixed use can get a variety. Of businesses, super and employees, everybody that is gonna be having the jobs there. And for the twenty, it's South Downtown Project, Road Works and the T Station and all. It'd be a recognizable, people bowl. For outside Ashland residences who want to find jobs inside four ninety-five and yet be local. This would be a recognizable and understand mixed use. I'm all mixed use, there's definitely mixed use. And with the not having got started yet comprehensive plan, this would be a good example of what. Could look forward to. So I'm I'm looking at it for a good reasons, mixing mixed use, register. And the and the apartments, the affordable house and whatever is gonna be there. But for economic growth and Ashland to be a town to come to. Not just to drive through off the T and says walk to a restaurant or stores and stuff like that. Here's where you get an employment growth for mixed use here. And I'm very happy to understand what I'm looking at, the site is more professionally looked at and together on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, a second hand was raised and I will jump to that and that is Miss Joan uh Good Friday. Uh, Joel, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself with your name and address.
All right. Now Joan Good Friday, Winchell Road, Ashland. Um, I I actually, um, I I do think this is a much nicer plan. Um, than than what was before you before. I do have a couple of quick questions. Um, one is the towers. Um, I'm just, I I guess my personal view is the less imposing, the better. So I'm just wondering what the um concept of the towers are, are they, are they um usable? Or are they um decorative or um what is, what would be their function?
Want me to answer that, Chris?
Yes, please, please go free.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
So um. Yeah, so similar to actually the previous renderings that were presented for building fifty. Uh, we designed some, you know, kind of an iconic end element to fifty, which incorporated uh some reused granite. Uh, but they were actually part of, you know, on each floor, the the apartment. On the lower level was commercial space, mixed use space, and on the upper levels, uh it were, it they were the apartments. So they just had kind of a specialty uh appearance on the outside, uh but it is usable space uh on each floor.
Okay, and um, thank you. Um, and is the purple, so the purple areas are commercial. Are they, are they totally commercial or is the commercial on the bottom and are the residential on the top still?
Yeah, through the chair, the, yeah, the purple areas are essentially the. Mixed use, commercial, retail, restaurant components on the main first floor. And then to the rear, the brown areas are the apartments and then above the uh. Mixed use commercial on the first floor are the units on each floor.
Okay. Um, I I have a thought and you know, just I'm gonna throw it out there, but um. The, what if the tower on the fifty was kept and the tower on thirty was maybe modified somewhat to um. To have kind of a different shape where it where it allowed a little more landscape there and kind of. Kind of um gave you the turn of the road that came in, um that came in as opposed to cutting it off straight. Like you did on fifty, I I I like what you did there. Um, just a comment and I appreciate you listening. Thank you so much.
All right, I don't see any more hands at this time. Um. So for the planning board, where, what are the, what are the questions that um? You know, when we think ahead, like what are we, what are we looking to see next on this? What are the questions that we are gonna need? What are the things we need to look at in more depth? Obviously, this is just the beginning of design. We don't have any elevations. We don't have floor plans. But I think there may still be some bigger questions hanging out there. Um.
I I I have a couple, uh Tricia, that um.
Yeah.
We we can, we can start getting uh with with this concept, which I believe we've heard. Most of us feel is now going in the right, in in the right direction. May- maybe to start seeing more more finite calculations on parking or things of that nature and and parking. Um, affordable housing. Um, but I think there's one item that is kind of floating out there that 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 we kind of alluded to. Uh, but it has to be kind of um really explained and is the 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 high limitation. Uh, we 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 spoke about that a couple of meetings ago and 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 I guess the the what's being proposed. Uh, includes some of that. So if we can understand, uh are we, are we um? And and I believe Peter was going to do some research on this. Peter, correct me if if I'm wrong. But i- i- the first question would be, are we violating the 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 current limit? The high limitation with that fourth story on on fifty? And if so, what are the consequences of that?
Yeah, so that's, I agreed. I think that and the question. Um, for me, the question of affordability, the twenty-five to fifteen, um, very much understanding that there are. You know, in terms of financing, in terms of design, in terms of fitting in on the site, that that those are the. Those are the trade-offs. So, but to, you you know, as something that we need to keep um to get, kind of get our heads around. But not in a singular meeting, can we say, yep, that's the answer we need to move forward, but we kind of need to understand those, the implications of. All of that. Um, so um. Yeah, so I think those 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 questions are still are still out there, but I'm, again, I'm, I'm feeling that this this has potential. To kind of to to more, to fully explore some of those options. Um, I don't want to, I would. I guess caution the applicant against getting, in a way, getting too specific too fast. Until we have some of that information worked out. Um, so it's more about taking kind of just one step forward rather than ten steps forward. As maybe a project that is working, that is hoping to work in collaboration with the town. It it would be, would be appropriate to do, that we just take kind of. You know, to kind of take steps forward, but leaps forward as we as we try to get the answers as we go. Um.
So, connect uh to the chair, um.
Yep.
So we've been informed that uh the, as of the town meeting adopted uh in six. Twenty twenty-one. That because we're into getting a special permit for this project in the first place, the planning board can grant. Uh, upon a special permit application extending to a fourth floor on any development in this. Zoning overlay district. Uh, we've kind of reconfirmed that with Peter. It is in your bylaws. Um, so that is potentially what we need. We think we need to do. We've done some very preliminary uh unit counts and layouts. And without that, and again, it's only proposed to be a portion of number, what we're calling fifty. It's not the whole, the whole building and we would be setting it back from Main Street. Um, in order to maintain that two hundred unit count. Um, so. The other information you're looking for is a parking square foot summary, which we are currently in the midst of. In a parking summary, um reflective of this latest layout. Um, however, the next step, you know, at our end really would be to reconfirm uh the floor plates. And the unit counts accurately. And to, you know, to start to have, to look at what this does look like from Main Street. Uh, it would be, you know, prudent for us to do that as along with these other pieces of information that you're talking about. But certainly we want to start the imagery of the of these buildings as as soon as possible.
I I I think that's fine. I'm certainly not trying to tell you not to work on your project. I just want to make sure that we, that I feel I'm pleasantly surprised. That we're able to have this kind of dialogue today. And I want to make sure that can continue. The back and forth of the dialogue versus getting to a point where. Where that that becomes strained. So, um. I, yeah, does it, does that make sense?
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? I I recall a recent project where. And I think it was a Jerry Efron project where Jerry prepared a memo essentially to kind of summarize what. What is the applicant's position as to our authority? I think something like that would be helpful now. I almost look at this as a brand new project. Like this to me looks nothing like what we were seeing before. And it's almost like we're starting from scratch in our discussion and I for one, I think, you know, you have an attorney who is gonna make a final statement today. Um, if that attorney could provide us a brief memo as to how you believe. Our bylaw allows a fourth story so that we can better understand it together with your new renderings at the next meeting. So that we as a board can can review it and really understand what your position is. I understand you've had some of those discussions with Peter and that's great. Um, but you know, we as a board need to see what what you're asking us to do. Certainly the public is curious, you know. Can the board do a fourth story under what circumstances? And I think the applicant should go through the bylaw and show us that it's appropriate for a special permit here. Um, and make, you know, start essentially writing the um. The factors, if you will, for us so that we can start thinking about this project in the context of the bylaw.
We do have some precedent for this, Peter.
I just want to make a note that, you know, Scott, I I I don't, I think you misspoke. I have not confirmed any any regulations regarding height. Uh, you know, I think we talked about it at the last meeting and what I stated was that I was gonna consult with town council and and Tricia. Is 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 a member of the planning board regarding that vote that was taken and the work that we did back. Uh, in two thousand, in in this, in the, in the year of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, regarding the updates to the bylaw, but you know, I I have not confirmed anything. Uh, regarding that regulation and I think what I was really doing is I was waiting to see what type of, you know, a plan that was to come forward. I think what Anna stated, I think that's a great idea is to put a legal memo together, that's something that we could take to our council. Uh, and and I could, and we could kind of revise and and not revise, but review to see, you know, what our regulations are. But um, I I'm happy to do that, but I cannot say that I confirmed any any height regulations uh since the last meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
I mean, I think, I think that would be really, really helpful.
Like, yeah, I think, I think that seems like, like I said, we do have precedents where that has happened before for other issues in front of the of planning boards. So if that's, if if that's something that Rich um is is agreeable to. I mean, that would, that would help, you know, like I said, present your case about uh, about how this works.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. We're we're gonna look into that, um, clarify all of that. And um, I think that uh Joe Antonelli is getting involved on that end will be helpful as well. So we will get back to you on that at at the next meeting.
Marcelo, we.
Obviously, including a section on affordability.
Yeah, hold on, I think Anne, I think Marcelo was.
Uh, I I was just gonna say before, before I forget, cause uh Scott made a list of the the few things that they're gonna be looking into. Um, and and one thing that I I I would like the board to 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 get some feedback on as these uh concept evolves is. Uh, the unit mix too. Uh, I believe I seem to recall the unit mix was fairly balanced before. I want to make sure that stays balanced. It's not very uh loaded to to just one, a ha- a very high percentages of of of. One bedrooms or things like that. Um, so if we can add that to the list of things that we that we'll start hearing from, that would be great.
Okay.
And and running it by the fire department, I I think the applicant was here in our chat with the deputy chief. Um, you know, let's get that in the in the memo as well. And I'm sort of visualizing a memo that summarizes this project anew. Because it's it's essentially a new project. That's how I'm looking at it. It's a brand new conversation. Finally, we're having the conversation I think we all wanted. Um. So something that really touches on basics.
Yeah, I guess Peter can touch base with um the deputy chief to see if this is still too too early for them. You know, or at what stage it's the right, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Well, we we have reviewed the project with the uh fire department previously, so we'd be glad to continue. Uh, that discussion based on this new layout to make sure we get their feedback.
Okay, great. All right, anything else? Um. Lot of information tonight, a lot of different things coming from different uh, different points of view.
Um, I have a, something is more the board, but I guess I kind of wanna make sure we know the shot clock. Cause I believe this was initially permitted under the abbreviated timeframe. Am I remembering that correctly about this project? So, um. We have to probably make sure, I think another project that we recently had got pretty close to that and then it wasn't fun at the end. Um, because of that, so I'd like to keep track of that.
I think this is a little different because it's a special permit project, but Peter, can you weigh in?
Yeah, that's, this is a special permit project, Kate, and so we have some, we have time, you know, and and and. I think regarding the special permit projects, as long as the applicant and the town, the planning board uh combined. Uh, agree that more time needs to take place. Um, we have that. Um, and then regarding the site plan approval, I've been working with the application team to make sure we're extending that time period out. So I typically follow up with Rich and or um Mr. Anthony Ellis after the meetings. Uh, and I'll do, I'll do so tomorrow as well, just to make sure that we have the the paper documentation as well. But a little bit different uh because this involves uh special permits. Um, and obviously it's a, it's a project that I think the application team understands that uh more time is needed than necessary.
All right, on that note, I'm just gonna make one more note here and that it's it's coming from kind of a designer perspective. About how, and I don't know who in your office, Scott, if you or you have a team working on drawings like this, I'm not sure. But there's something about these type of, there's something about these type of drawings that are um. They're, they're specific, but they they also have the warmth to them and they leave something to the imagination, which is a really good place to start. On these kind of design discussions. And so I appreciate you going back to this kind of drawing. That I think really helped us get into this, the discussion more. There is a thing about different drawing types and and how they're presented. And when they're presented that allow these type of ideas to open up, I guess, and discussions to open up that might not have otherwise. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, so.
Yep, we 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 agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
Um, and Mr. Antonelli has his hand up, so we will.
Yes, I uh, Rich's comments relative to a closing statement, really not a closing statement. I just want to take the opportunity to make a couple of uh remarks. Um, relative to the cooperative aspect of this project. On multiple occasions tonight. Uh, the board members have have stated that we're having the conversation that you wanted to have. And and I appreciate that and uh it it took a while for all of us to get there. Uh, collectively, this is a a a project that was pre-COVID. Rich and I started uh and Scott started back before COVID. And we worked very, very closely with uh your your staff in town, which has been really, uh always found them to be extremely cooperative. Open, um, willing to engage in in the kinds of conversations that are necessary for a project of this size. And I feel uh collectively emboldened, all of us tonight, that we're getting uh to the point where we are having a discussion. That you you feel is is something that we can move the project forward. Very pleased to hear that. Um, so. Many of the questions I might want to ask the board have already been answered tonight. Um, Rich brought up the issue about affordability and unit count, which are significant economic concerns. Relative to the viability of the project. And um, I, I think those, those are going to have to stay on the table. As 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 part of our project. So when we come back with the specifics, they will be based on the two hundred units. Uh, I thought Scott did an outstanding job in referencing the type of space and the flex space that's there now. Which is really more industrial than commercial. Um, and um, I look at your downtown. which is really more industrial than commercial. Um, and, um, I look at your downtown and I'm very well aware of the history of your community. And, um, I, and I, I think this is an opportunity to really create history in the downtown. I think you as a board are giving a wonderful opportunity work with an applicant who's open to your suggestions and to perhaps set a tone for the future of a downtown in a, uh, community, uh, in, in, in Massachusetts. And, and really someone will come by someday and look at the work you've done, just as you're looking at the work. And, and Trish, you mentioned it about people bringing up stuff to you about this factory's been retrofitted. Look how nice that is. I'm, I'm really hoping that we can move this project to the point where people are coming and saying, look at what the planning board and the developer did in downtown Ashland. I think this is your opportunity to, to create some history and, um, more than happy to continue to work with you in that regard relative to the memorandum that Anna talked about, more than happy to get that going for you. Uh, and to work on it now with the sense that we have something that I think collectively we can move forward with. So it's, it's late. You don't need to hear me say any more than that. I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate, appreciate, the continued cooperations, the suggestions that have been made in the past and the comments that were made tonight. It really, really helped tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, then I think we are, what, what date are we looking at here before we make a motion? Nope, you're, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I've been trying to eat snacks while I've been sitting here.
Unchoked, Peter.
I know, I know. These, these veggie sticks are just delicious. Um, March ninth is our next meeting and then the follow-up meeting will be March twenty-third. Uh, we have, uh, we have a couple of smaller new public hearings on the twen- on the ninth. Uh, one is a scenic road and one is a, uh, is, is another item. Um, but also I would have to limit it up to the application team, you know, for your next steps to move forward. Obviously, I think the board stated tonight, you know, you know, the small steps should probably be the best route. Um, uh, and that's, you know, most cost effective. Um, does, does this team want to come back in on the ninth? Uh, with the update and/or is this something that we want to further discuss in the twenty-third?
Uh, Scott, you're really a big driving force in that because, um, the next thing is going to be, you know, unit counts and numbers and, um, a lot of stuff on your end, some elevation things, uh, et cetera. So what is, what's your thought on that, Scott?
Well, I think we have some good momentum here. And I, again, I don't, a- as Trish said it, we don't want to get too carried away. So I would prefer, uh, to be back on the ninth if that's possible.
Works for me.
I think, I think we can do the ninth. We'll be paying attention though for, um, we'll be watching, we'll be watching the clock, right? So that we're, we're giving projects, um, a, a certain slot of time so that we're not here discussing, you know, uh, as the hour gets too late. So I'm okay with that, but small steps, small steps get a smaller time would, would be appropriate, I think. So, but I agree that sometimes a month can be a long time, so. Okay, with the board? I think we do have some questions out here that need to be, would be good if we got some answers more. So I don't, and I'm not sure you'd be able to do your whole list of things, but I guess that, that's up to you.
Uh, yeah, we'd like to come back on the ninth and, you know, we can kind of come back with as much we can gather together in that time. Um, and like you said, small steps here. So.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful. And like Scott said, we got some momentum now and really appreciate everybody's comments. There was a lot of work that went into this and we really feel good about it. I, I really feel good about it. And, um, I appreciate all the positive input you guys gave tonight. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Peter, I might not be available first thing in the morning to get that extension back to you, uh, or as we have in the past, that's always come back to you very quickly. But, uh, you have, uh, the board can take my word that the applicant agrees to the extension and we will get the appropriate uh, signature back to you as quickly as possible.
No problem. We'll work with you guys on that and, uh, we'll, we'll take it from there. But thank you very much, Joe.
Well, can I just ask a question, both of Peter and Trisha? Do you think we could have town council opinion? Kind of as a response to the memo for March ninth, is that doable just to kind of move that along and close that issue? I feel like that's the big hurdle we ha- we have to overcome. We need to see the applicant's position, the fourth story.
I, I think. Yep, I think that is, I think that is a big hurdle. That's why I'm also, uh, would want to exercise caution about pushing the project too far before we have, before we have the information about, about bylaws and unit, unit counts and height. So, um, so I will let that, you know, between the applicant, the, the, the design team and we will see where they are on March ninth. And if they're not, if, if the information isn't ready, then well, you know, might need to be continued out. So, but I'm, I'm okay giving, I'm okay giving them the opportunity to try to make March ninth. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. So on that note, I will make a motion to continue, it's the official name here. Let's send the sixty Main Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review to Thursday, March ninth. It's seven from the team, like all of our public hearings.
I'll second that, Tricia.
Thank you. And roll cover.
Anna Tesmenetski, I.
Marcelo Hona, I.
Catherine Durzakai.
And Trisha Kendall, I. So that is continued to March ninth. Um, thank you. And if we can make sure we get, like this drawing, uh, actually it's already up on the website, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's already up there. Yep.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Right. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know.
All right. Now, planning board, we are in the very odd position of it being nine oh nine. And we just have, um, just various topics that we have an opportunity to discuss. I am determined to keep the length of the meeting within reasons, certainly no later than ten thirty. Um, but before that, if we can, because we need some nights that are reasonable, right? That said, so I ask people, when they talk about these different comments, be succinct. Or when we talk about these different topics, to be succinct, we're not going to solve everything in one night. Um, but to basically just kind of generating ideas. Um, the first one of these, I think is just, is, is pretty simple. And that's number five, future date for joint meeting with the Conservation Commission. I'm going to actually say, because, um, I'll let Peter, uh, talk about this. He's been working on it. But since we're not going to be taking any votes, these are just discussions. People need to step away and come back. Let's, let's just do it that way instead of taking an official break. So not going to be missing, uh, too much. Peter?
Sure, sure. So I'll jump into this one. I know this is a request, um, from the, um, from the board to meet kind of with the Conservation Commission as a check-in. I think this is a great idea. Um, obviously I reached out to, um, through their staff members, Becca Solomon, uh, who is the conservation agent. I emailed her and I, uh, you know, with the request that the planning board would be looking to meet with the Conservation Commission. Uh, and so Becca, uh, who is a stone's throw from my, from where I sit. Um, if you, you guys, if, if anybody, when, when everyone knows the, the, uh, office layout, um, she was going to take this request to her chair and put it on her agenda, uh, for next week. And so hopefully we'll get a response, uh, back. Um, I just want to know, obviously it was great to have the fire department here. Um, and I know what our, our later on down the agenda, the Upper Charles Trail, um, they, uh, have asked to meet with the planning board. Uh, they were going to meet tonight, however, Preston Crowe, uh, former planning board member, um, they actually asked to reschedule due to school vacation. So I think it was good that we, uh, met with the fire department, but, uh, just to make note that, uh, this hopefully will be in the works. So that is my quick, uh, update on this one.
Right. Any questions from the board about what's going on to schedule that? I think there, I think the only question is that we don't know if that'll be just like, um, the conservation agent, Becca Solomon and the chair, or if it's going to be whatever of their members want to attend unless it's, they'll have to post it as a meeting. We're going to kind of leave that up to them, you know, how, how they want to. We're extending the invitation and it's how they want to respond to it, so.
I would just say, Peter, if you can keep us updated so we can all try to have some bullet points ready for them. I think that needs to be a well-guided conversation.
Uh, I will try, you know, yeah, definitely. You know, just like, like, just like tonight, I'll try to throw an email out to see um, if I can, you know, uh, get some bullet points. And I'm happy to put a, a memo together to send to the Conservation Commission. Uh, 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 points of interest, I would say, but I think that's a good point, Kevin.
All right. Um, next item is, um, a discussion of, of a new pre-application conference with the planning board. This was, um, a suggestion Kate had for a discussion topic for our meeting. So Kate, I'll let you, uh, introduce that a little bit.
Sure, I, um, I've just been, my time on the board, I see frustration from like applicants. Um, the public, right? When there's continuances and the continuances are often over maybe the state of it or direction or things. Uh, maybe that if we can get ahead of, could speed up the whole thing and if not wearing to ourselves. And I looked, um, I saw many, you know, quite a few boards. I didn't spend days researching by Saint Peter that it seems the boards that do have this, it's optional. But what the, the kind of point of that is to get, to get before someone spends a whole bunch of money on drawings, right? And engineering, they're like, and maybe, I mean, maybe the previous application would be a good point if that had some kind of conversation before it ever happened, maybe, maybe some, uh, things would be in better order, right? So, um, I, I don't know that making it mandatory would be helpful. Uh, maybe, maybe we should though, um, but I would like to see it as an option and then maybe we can, you know, kind of streamline the whole process all, because I could say it's another meeting, but it's certainly, you, I think everyone can point to issues that would have been solved or resolved or well on their way before it got in front of us or not. I should be on certain things.
I think it's an interesting idea and, and we should definitely could keep talking about it and keep exploring it. I'd like to see Kate a little bit more, uh, detail about that. Like what does it look like in other communities? How often do they do it? Do they do it on specific size projects? Just so we have more context, if you're kind of looking at a couple of those things, maybe if you can put together a little blurb for us. But it, it does seem interesting and I think worth discussing or continuing to discuss.
Yeah, it looks like every community that had it, there was no size. Um, it wa- it was just, it, it was a choice. It was a choice. Discuss.
Yeah, we actually. Have had those in Ashland, I believe for twelve Pond Street. Um, but there was a, hmm, um, an optional before the public hearing started, that they came before the planning board. That was when I would, I have to go back and look at the tape because it was really when I had just started on the board. Um, but I remember it happening before, so I don't know where it, I don't know if it's just a common thing that if you ask it happened, I don't think it's written down anywhere, but we certainly have done it before.
It reminds me a little bit of that language in our bylaw that lets us have, lets us have meetings. Remember that language? That sort of allows us to have some kind of public discussion or whatever. It reminds me of that a little bit. Um,
And that's, I mean, it, it's an. So.
That's in our site plan review bylaw, which is, which is, uh, that's in our site plan review bylaw. Yeah. Um, just to make note of that. In site plan review, I think I've mentioned that this, it, it lives, site plan review has no tie to any section within chapter forty A, which is the responsibilities of planning board. So site plan review lives at the local level. Uh, and every community site plan review process is very similar, but yet can be different depending on how it was drafted and adopted and amended over the years. And so, um, just to make note of that. But I, I agree, you know, I, I've seen it in many other communities. Um, I think it's a good option, you know, and, uh, I, I, I'm happy to kind of, uh, help implement some sort of process.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, um, I, I think it's a great idea. I thought, but then I, um, like I said, we've done before. I'm not, I think sometimes they probably have, but the results are very, so sometimes the results are very, um, efficient and effective. And other times, you know, maybe they're not, that it's just, um, so I don't, uh, you know, it's even like ten to sixty Main Street. We had two years of meetings before that. We had public forums, we had, you know, and it didn't seem, in, in a way, it didn't seem to make much difference. It was, that's why it was quite frustrating. Um, so, uh, and, yeah.
But those were planning board process, right? So this is institutionalizing.
I, I, I get it. I'm just, I'm just saying, but it's still out there. It's still, there's still opportunity for voices. There's still, you know, it, it's not put under one label versus another label, but these things did, I mean, the, the twelve, the twelve Pond Street was a planning board process. They were in front of the planning board. So I'm, I'm not against the idea. I'm for the idea. I'm just saying it's not a, that I doubt will be a, you know, it's not, nothing's going to be a cure-all, right?
Of course.
But another opportunity to, to, you know, to have early discussions, I think is always a, is always a good idea. So.
Well, I, I remember, Trisha, I think you had drafted a very good mission statement for us as, as a planning board. I don't know what, what we did with it. Um, but maybe we need to add a sentence to that or add some sort, something to it, put it on our website and make it very clear to applicants that, you know, we as, we as a planning board are prioritizing communication with the public, including developers. And we welcome informal and formal opportunities to discuss reactions to projects as they're developing, to save money, make it more efficient, you know, provide our gut instinct on a project. Um, I, I see no harm in that kind of invitation. And I think we should think about how to frame that and how to make it public and put it on our website and invite that type of, that type of conversation. Like if I was a developer coming into Ashland and I knew that the planning board was as active and design oriented as, as this one, I probably would find it really helpful to get the instinct of the board on a project prior to investing a lot of money um, into design. So we just need to sort of make that clear and make that heard. And, and I can see that being really valuable for everyone.
But I agree, I agree. Um, so I'm just, I'm just saying it's, it's, it has been done, but maybe we can, maybe it can, just somehow we can have it be more effective. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know what the rules were at that time or the, the information that was out there, I don't know, you know, so I'm not sure what the difference would be. It's a different board, certainly, a completely different board. So maybe that's just the difference. And, you know, um, so I'm, I'm totally for the.
Yeah, it sounds like maybe back then it was specific to specific projects. Maybe they asked for it or whatever. And it sounds like Kate, you're, you're suggesting a systemic change, a cultural kind of shift in how we present. We, the planning board, present to the public, which is, we are interested in this. We're offering this as a service. Um, so that when folks are presenting a project, if they wish, they can come to us, to the planning board. Um, for some reason, it, it really speaks to me, maybe because I feel like we've had several projects in a row, including this last one that we just had this evening, where there's some kind of disconnect of, well, we already had all these meetings. We already had all these discussions. They come to us and the planning board has these really strong views and the developers are surprised or shocked or somehow thrown off. And it takes a little while to get to the conversation we actually want to have, or it's somehow offensive. So, um, it really resonates with me that it's almost like a rebranding of the planning board to make it really clear that we want to be active members in, in the development process and we want to be helpful. So that, um, our, our immediate instincts are clear to applicants. Um, and they can find the process much less frustrating.
I think it's something that we, we had, we had, have been talking about clarifying the whole planning board process, including the, the design review committee, you know, where, when things go to design review committee, when do they come back? And I think it's all a part of that timeline. You know, whether it's optional or not optional, this, this, this meeting, but it's all part of looking at that timeline and having it there for developers to review, you know, as a, getting a whole picture of things. So, um, as soon as, uh, I don't know, as soon as we have open space on our to-do list, I guess we can, uh, address that more completely. I don't know, as soon as we have open space on our to do list, I guess we can address that more completely.
Well, I can, I can get like other applications and make a draft application and because I think you just want the basics who is in front of you and um, and then I think if we have, I don't think we have a mission statement published though, so it won't help there. I mean, if we did those two things, I don't see the harm if we're not making it mandatory.
No, I mean, I, I think it's something that maybe um, we can have a draft and look at it in a deeper way in a retreat. So.
Yeah, well, I, 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 I would caution. I, I think the idea is good, but I, I think the, the idea to try to regulate every single step uh, to, 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 to the point and make more and more, you know, checklist and paperwork, not necessarily create efficiency. I think there is something about um, when a developer uh, puts their money where their mouth is and uh, have uh, something that is, that, that can be discussed and that is binding, more binding than just a conversation. I think the, an, an open door to have a conversation, of course, and I, I think we, we can just make it clear that, that the door is open. Uh, trying to make a, a point and, and, and a statement about it. I, 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 I just see it differently. I, I just don't see, I, I see that it can model the conversation more than it can clarify it in a way. Well, that's, that's my view.
Yeah, well, like I said, I think if we put together some kind of document that we have in front of us that we can actually discuss, then we can hear out whether we want it to be. You know, make sure people, make sure developers know it's an option, or if we feel that it needs to be written in as far as policy. So if it's a policy, it might be a bylaw. I'm, I'm not sure. So, alright, any, anything else on that? Okay, so next is a discussion of the accessory dwelling by law. So we kind of touched on this before, but Kate, you had mentioned this again. Was there something specific you wanted to talk about?
Well, I, yes, I would because I think we could probably be practical and put on the spring town meeting, but not if we don't do something. And my proposal, I wanted to see if the board was supportive of, of supporting it to basically make accessory dwelling unit by right. Right now it's special permit and to get rid of the, um, it has to, for all intents and purposes, a relative. Um, I think that we had talked and it probably would be in our interest as a community to consider having at some point pursuing, you know, it could be under DHCD for affordable housing, but that's, that's a much bigger process and there's lots of things to that. So I think if we go with the incremental change, um, it isn't up to us. We would be bringing it to the community, but there was um, in the housing production plan, it said there were, there wasn't a lot of use of it, but it was talked about the select board. I heard at their last meeting or so that they've, they've said they've talked about it before. So I, I mean, that is my specific reason now bring it up if we can. If anyone is all at on board, bringing it up for spring town meeting and, and I know that there, you know, they have to have hearings. There's timelines, so.
So basically, basically the process right now is an accessory dwelling unit, you know, um, is a maximum um, of eight hundred square feet. I think there's also a percentage of the existing house and you can take the eight hundred square feet or the lesser of something. I don't remember that part. Um, and then it goes before, it goes before zoning board of appeals for the approval. Um, and it does require it, that, that is supposed to be for a family member. So the first step in that, the first step into make it more accessible would just be to take out the family member. Which completely makes sense to me right now. I mean, I don't know how they would tell the difference. This isn't like, this is my second cousin's wife's, you know, whatever. Who's going to live in this apartment, but um, but uh, if you just take out the, first of all, the family member, now you can have a friend. You know, living there or stranger, you know, kind of the, the accessory dwelling unit is the same. To me, that would be the first step. I think having it by right would probably be I assume would be a harder sell because basically what you're opening up to and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, that once you have an accessory dwelling unit, that's rent, that's potentially rentable. It's rentable is that we don't control that, right, Peter? I mean.
Yeah, so right now there's no mechanism to, there's no controlling mechanism. No, it's uh, uh, we, there's no, or there, there's, there's very little in or no oversight of who's renting that, what your rent is. Uh, but you went through the special permit process and you got the special permit in your and, and you pulled the building permits, but there's, there's really little follow up at that point to say who's renting it and are they family members as you say.
Yeah, so that, so I think that the first step of taking out the family member. It was, it's pretty straightforward and I think would be, I, I think it, it should be there, that you should take out, you know, family member. Um, I think the by right is going to be a, is going to be a bigger issue and I'm not saying we shouldn't tackle that, but I think it, it deserves a higher level of discussion. You know, because it, it's about um, it, it, it is about affordable housing. It is about it, it is about rental units and spreading out rental units. And that's a, that's a different um, question when it's not going through the zoning board of appeals.
And I think.
Saying in, in that case, it doesn't even hit our housing inventory. So even though it may create actual affordable housing, it does, it's not affordable housing that will count for the town of Ashland.
Well, I think of, I don't think it can be officially listed unless it's like a, and you know, somehow where you know, to control the amount of rent you get on.
Right. No, it has to be. And you, we can work with DHCD and have a bylaw for that. It's not, I mean, anytime soon, I'm sure it's not practical. And there's also communities where they have people give deed at affordable exchange for like tax breaks, particularly for elderly. So there's lots of possibilities to um, help more than just have affordable housing. So that it would be, it would be, the by right would be naturally affordable only at this point.
Right, just because they would be, just because they're by, by nature, small spaces.
So I'll make a suggestion that for this spring meeting, we probably will not have sufficient time as a board to to draft something, but it sounds like we have some interest on this board. We have some ideas. Trish is familiar with it. Kate, you've got some ideas. I'm very familiar with the tax incentive piece. Why don't we think about it for not this town meeting, but the next one? Um.
And ju-. Just for the record, I, I just the, the uh, listened to what Trisha was saying. I, 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 I am not at all in agreement that this should be a by right. I think this is a process that can.
Oh, yeah, no, I.
Destroy the urban fabric of entire neighborhoods if it, if it becomes totally on, on, you know, on, on control. I think there should be a, a, a very strict rationale for it. And, and I, it should not be something that can just pop up. And I don't buy the argument that is going to reduce afford, increase affordable housing. It is, it's very limited, the amount of, of, of those that, that will be created. I, I think large projects create more affordable housing. I just don't buy that, the argument myself.
And honestly, eight hundred square feet compared to apartments, some places that go for two thousand dollars a month is big.
But depends on how many. But if you, if you take any neighborhood, actually, because you, you will need to have a site that can allow that. Otherwise it happens, what's happening in other states. Where sites that basically uh, void all the setbacks, for example, because you can put those and they are favoring those and, and, and streets become uh, an absolute chaos of buildings on top of buildings. It's just, it, it, it's not a, I don't think it's a good, not, not a good.
I mean, I think currently, at least in our bylaws, it's not, um, you know, even if it was made by right, you still have to stay within the setback lines. You still have to provide off-street parking, you know, so, yeah, so it's pretty um.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
It's already regulated.
It's pretty tight in that way, but I, I think it does deserve more research. I mean, it is in the, in the housing production plan. I was on that committee. Um, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think it also deserves more research about, well, what, what is the effect when, when communities have this by right is? Does it produce a lot of housing? Like, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer. It just seemed like it, yeah, I don't know the answer to those questions. So I don't think we should go into it without knowing those answers, without doing our homework.
Oh, it's, I don't think it's going to solve like housing in Ashland by any, by any. It's um, so if anyone thinks that, I think we know the answer. I think it's just, um, I mean, there's lots and lots of communities that have by right. Um, there's some that, there's a few communities that don't have it at all. Um, but I guess the um, I think that the family member probably makes sense because right now I, I've seen zoning board of appeals where people come and say they're trying to get a dispensation. It's empty because they are following the by law and then Peters indicating or somebody that lots of people aren't following. And that's not really equitable either. Um, but I think um, if it's okay to build apartments all over and, and, and we want to increase housing or we, we say that, then I think it should probably be given equal attention to the uh.
But it's not equal. I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but it's not equal because apartments are developed in, in, in parcels of land that can support it and then, and, and the zoning allows it. Um, an additional zoning units on a neighborhood that is established can have a, a much different effect.
But it's already allowed in our bylaws in a very, very clean way.
In a very controlled way, so, so that I.
Yeah, so I think that the trick is that it's not, it's not utilized necessarily. One of the reasons communities like Ashland have these bylaws, but they're not actively utilized is because of tax issues and specific limitations like family members. So there are ways to make it much more active and it absolutely makes a difference in a community like Ashland where the population is getting older. Where, you know, there are family members getting older that we want to keep close by.
That makes total sense.
I would say, yeah, and I will, I will say that we have a very vibrant immigrant community that values family. Um.
That, that makes all sense. What, what I wonder is I'll make sure that, that doesn't become uh, like, like a, an Airbnb central, you know?
Well, that's what I was thinking. Maybe we, maybe we need to think about some communities do, do partner their accessory dwelling bylaw changes with Airbnb bylaws. Um, and so, you know, we need to kind of think about how those things go together. Um, so you know, if we can keep this item on the agenda, I, I have a special interest in it as well. It sounds to me like there's at least three of us, Tricia, Anna, Kate that have some strong ideas about it and, and maybe we can kind of pull our ideas together in the coming months. And it sounds like we don't have time for spring, but maybe we do for fall.
So are, does it make sense though for the spring to to cross out relatives as that incremental um, kind of change and then exposing people to the idea, right, we're, we're, look, we're not supposed to be the five and six of us and seven of us and Peter making decisions to the community. We're supposed to be working with the community. So I feel like that's a small way to make incremental change and expose the community to it and then start more of those conversations.
I mean, I, I like where you're going with it. Kate, if you want to draft something and present it to us, I think we're pushing the deadlines a little bit and I think you have to come, bring it to us first. Um, and it's really up to the town, right? I like the idea of a conversation, a town meeting about it. Um, and if it's just that one word change, I could see it being a very narrow, simple discussion that might you know, even if it doesn't pass, might create some good, good energy so that we can learn as a planning board from what the community is actually interested in. And we can, we can maybe have a stronger bylaw change in the fall.
Yeah, I, I think it is literally, I don't have it in front of me, but.
It's two places. It's the, it's the definition.
Be, it could be a one word kind of, you know, crossing it off. It's, it's, it's divine, it's defined in very few places and it's on the bylaw. So.
I just want to make note, I, I don't think anyone is abusing it, you know, I think, you know, and just it is Kate, you know, I think since I've been here four years, I've permitted about a handful, maybe five or six of these accessory dwellings, family accessory dwellings. Uh, and, and, and in all cases, uh, you know, there were successful about, you know, the successful additions. Right? The question is after, you know, if you know, if, if that family relative moved, you know, is moves on to their next step. Um, you know, in life, you know, and or the circle of life. The question is, um, what happens to that unit, right, that you bought that accessory dwelling? And that's, that's something that I, I think we could still kind of work, you know, that, that's still that unanswered piece. That's what I was trying to mention, you know, is it, does it get rented back out? And, and I've seen it go a couple of different ways. You know, I think each community face, you know, each community each community and tries to, 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 to work with it in a very different way. Um, and then also, you know, working in the planning office, I get a lot of reels, you know, you get a lot of calls from real estate agents, right? And, and I've always, and I've gotten these for like, you know, ten years, a couple of different communities. They say, hey, you know, we permitted this, uh, we built this addition, right? And it's, it's a second unit. We say, okay, well, it's not a second unit. You never got a special per, a bylaw, I mean, a permit for it. What is it? And I said, we can't list it as a two-family, right? It's really a one family with quote unquote additional living space, right? And so you kind of get into this catch, catchway too. What is it? How do you define it? And you kind of move through that process. That's what I was, I, I probably just want to, I just want to clarify what I was saying earlier. So sorry about that.
Alright, why don't between Kate and I, we'll look at the, we'll look at that by law and um, see if this is a easy something we want to present at the next town meeting that there's literally just a couple of words we want to adjust or if it you know, or we make the call that it's not, it's not that simple. We're going to wait and we should be at it for the next meeting.
So do we, what's the, I mean, is the process that, that you would Tricia asked for a placeholder because that can go away that we're considering uh, a bylaw change on the warrant?
Uh, Peter, I don't know what the deadlines are on those. Do you?
Uh, I don't know if the warrant is open at this point, but I can make a note to.
I think it is open.
Is it open right now?
Yeah.
I can make a note.
Yeah, they're, they're. I recall a memo went out from the select board and it specified the timeframes. I'm trying to pull it up now. And I want to say it's coming up the first week of March. Um, that we have to get the.
You're right. Now, this is, yeah, it's a placeholder.
So can we?
So.
Because it's okay to appear.
Can you look at that, Peter? If we can add a placeholder for that?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can make a note to the, to do, uh, I can make a note to assistant town manager who develops the warrant uh, that just to put a placeholder in.
Okay. Make a motion and take a vote, yeah.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay.
To make it formal.
Okay, so make a motion that we're going to put a placeholder in for a bylaw change related to accessory dwelling units. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a roll call?
Can that?
Yep, roll call vote.
Uh, just clarification.
Oh, yeah.
The vote is to, to, to put the placeholder.
Just put the placeholder in.
Not, not to determine what's in it.
Not to determine what's in it.
Okay.
Okay.
Deep moment, good day.
Thank you.
Anna Tassmanitsky, aye.
Maturo Hana, aye.
F. M. Jersey, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. So we will look at that. We'll put a placeholder in, we'll look at that and see if we want to proceed for a town meeting. And obviously it'll be discussed and voted on here first, so. Um, alright, um, just to make sure we cover this one topic, um, under administrative matters, letter A. Um, Peter, can you describe the, the covenant thing? Because that's a that is something that um, we'll be needing to schedule a joint meeting with the select board about.
Uh, sure, I'll jump into this one. Uh, so the planning office and the select board office jointly received a letter uh, from uh, based on development. Um, which is also known as Ashland, uh, based on Ashland LLC, uh, based on development, as everyone I'm sure remembers, is the developer Lloyd McDowell. Um, who is um, proposing and or was permitted for the last phase of the building Americas project over at a hundred to a hundred thirty Chestnut Street. So with that, um, after we permitted uh, that project, um, they closed on the property and now they are looking for, looking to, to move in and into a construction phase. Now, in the original covenant, which was dated, which was uh, signed back in two thousand and two, if everybody remembers. Uh, there's a clause and I'm happy to pull up that covenant is that they would only be building permits granted for a hundred units per year. I personally agree this is that it was kind of, uh, it, it was a way to help space. Kind of, uh, it, it was a way to help space out of the development of the Village of Americas. Right now, there's only a hundred and seventy, well, there's a hundred and seventy-four units within this proposed development. Um, and this ends all construction at Village of Americas. It closes out the entire project. Mr. McDowell is applying, uh, has drafted a letter asking the planning board jointly with the select board. To take up a consideration to alter that covenant to allow him to move forward with the development of all. Hundred and seventy-four units at one time. And, and so I, I will be reaching out in the next day or two, once I kind of work with the select board. To kind of set up a joint meeting with the planning board and the select board, um, so to at least hear. The, the request, uh, and then it can be therefore discussed, uh, between the planning board members and the select board members. But in theory, uh, Mr. McDowell and based on development is looking to, uh. Build all a hundred and seventy-four units at the same point. Is there any questions on that? Does anybody want to see the covenant?
If you have it easy, if you have it easy to.
Uh, two seconds, I'm sorry.
Would that affect like the, all of the construction, Peter, or just occupancy permits?
So it, it, in theory, it probably will, it will. Great question, Kevin. I'm not. Uh, I wish I had the right answer. I think it will affect all, I would say all construction. Um, just because I don't have the writing, I don't have the heat for business. This is the letter that was sent and I'm going to share this first. But for the, and, and I'm happy to send this out tomorrow. If anybody want to reads this, uh, quickly, please feel free. Uh, but I think it's that they're, they're stating that the develop, that the, is, uh, if they were not allowed to do this, it would extend. The timeframe of construction, which obviously affects the existing neighborhood, uh, that is surrounding. This, this, that was, that is already a mature neighborhood. That surrounds this parcel.
Can you scroll up on it, Peter?
Sure.
So we can read, I mean, I need to read the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, maybe, maybe I said it wrong.
Yeah, it's okay. No, I think I interpreted.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm happy to hold on a second. I'm gonna share the covenant. Uh, just for clarification, just to kind of.
I mean, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. We granted the project of a certain size and I think we, we need to make sure that. We follow the contract and if, and if it says something different, then we need to get together and fix that.
I agree with that. I think this, this doesn't seem applicable. I think it was intended for a different purpose and, and this project was already permitted. I mean. Not allowing the construction to follow a sequence would be absolutely crazy in my view.
Yes, so the.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, um, we don't really have it necessarily on our agenda as a discussion topic and. We have to, the vote has to be on a joint, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but the vote has to be on a joint meeting with the. Planning board and the select board.
Correct.
So they will be looking to, um, show that with us and we will need a quorum. There in, in order to, um, in order to, to do this.
So going back to the original covenant, there, there is a statement in that covenant to, to, to play by those rules, right? It says there has to be any alteration to that covenant needs to be jointly, that has, has to be done. Through a joint, jointly held meeting and or vote of the planning board and the select board. And so therefore, that's why the planning board can't do it and the select board can't do it. We have to be kind of together, uh, to do that. So, um, I'm just going to be looking to a separate meeting, not to give everyone.
So, and Peter, you'll send the letter to us.
Oh, yeah.
You'll send that to us.
Yep, I'll send the letter in the covenant to you and I can do that, um, I can do that tomorrow. If, and, and. Uh, I'm not too sure if I'll be able to nail down a date for a, a meeting. But I, I do know the select board meets next Wednesday night. Uh, I don't know if the planning board, if any, if, if a majority of the planning board can meet next Wednesday night. And or they want to take this on to their agenda, uh, next Wednesday night, but, um. Obviously, that is an option that we have to nail down by next Monday, um, this with the posting. Uh, poster requirements.
I think maybe it would be good for. Okay, if, if select board meets on Wednesday nights, in general, like I know Kate can't meet on Wednesday nights, right?
Yeah, I will, I will be, I'll be there. So, um.
You know, obviously Kevin can, could, could fill in, but it would also be important to know like how many of us. Generally can make a, a short period of time on a Wednesday night. And if we can, is it? Is it, hey, we want it to be at six o'clock or we want it to be at eight o'clock, like what works best? For us as a board, if we need to come to their meeting, you know?
I think they would be able to, to attend on a Wednesday in general. From six on, so I have some flexibility.
And I'm flexible.
I could do it, I could do it as well. It's in the evening meeting. I can make that work at a specific time. So it sounds like three of us can be there and I believe that's, that's a quorum for us, so. Seems like we should get it done.
Deepen, Kevin, you'd be kind of a maybe, depending on the day, depending on.
If we could nail it to a, a specific time, I. Don't envision a ton of debate, but I probably wouldn't have three hours to sit through the whole select board meeting.
Definitely not, not expecting anybody to do that. Okay.
Let me, let me, let me, I'll be, I'll be in tomorrow, into the office tomorrow. I'll work with Susan Roby to see if, uh, if, if they can. Add that to the agenda and if so, if they can put it at a specific time, uh, so we can all be efficient.
Okay, yeah, if they can be flexible so that we can, the time that works for us, it sounds like that's, it sounds like we can, we can do that. All right, so one, now that those things are good, we still, we do need to do the minutes, but are there any topics in the rest of the? Any topics in the rest there that someone else is picking out? I don't have anything else that I'll be picking out of the list tonight.
Um, I do want to just mention, I guess it's under the reports from board members and town plan or other, the, um. March eighteenth is the citizens planner training, um, seminar. It's an all-day thing. It's in Worcester. And, um, the, the topics this year look spectacular compared to other things I've seen, so. I did sign up, um, just want to let people know in case they missed that.
I'm going, I'm going as well. Um, I don't know if others are coming, but. It seems like a great opportunity and if more, more than a couple of us are going, it might be an interesting way to connect. Obviously, you want to talk about. Projects because that, that would violate public meeting laws, but to be together learning, I think is a positive thing for us as a board.
Yeah, I, I think, um. I think I'm going to be able to go. I'm still checking you out, but it would only be for the morning, you know, morning two sessions and then, um, that's it, but. Um, but it depends on what free time people have, so. Um, but I think you sent out that email, didn't you, Peter? Didn't it go out to the whole board? I think I got it in a general email.
I think I sent it out to everybody as a foreword. I'm happy to send it out again, uh, with the link, um, tomorrow.
Yeah, why don't you do that, just so people can take another look at it, have it at the top of their. You know.
Yeah. You know, I support C T P S. I think they're great. I know most of those people that run the, the, the. You know, the, the members of the master planning directors, you know, or, or also members of the C T P S. Um, I've been to a bunch of their stuff over the years. I have never been to this conference, the all-day conference, um, out in Worcester. But it is up at Holy Cross and a beautiful, you know, beautiful building, so I do know it's very, uh, well attended, so, um. I think, uh, I have nothing but good things to say about C, C T P S training.
So there are like seventeen topics in that, so do you just choose which ones from each session?
Yeah, so just make more, you know, what are you interested in? Okay, there, there's typically, you know, four. You know, four sessions going on at the same time and you can just pick whatever session you're most interested at that time, but.
Typically an hour each session?
I think it's an hour, hour fifteen minute each session, yeah. And they range from master planning, public hearings, community input. Um, and, and it's mostly, you know, um. You know, plenty of professionals, um, good friend of mine, Ralph Wilmer is the chair, uh, in, in C T P S. He actually was the project manager for both of the master plans I worked on. And so, um, so he's very, and, uh. Uh, he's very strategically, uh, important in C T P S, so. I usually, very good coffee.
All right, any other? Any other picks from the list before we, uh, just go through the meeting minutes? All right, um. Do you want to bring up the minutes, Peter? Because.
This one way, I just want to let everyone know, so I'm, I'm working on some, uh, parking stuff. I just don't have it, uh, ready yet. Uh, and then also Anna, I just want to make note that Anna requested a, a updated S H I list on, on where we stand and. And I'm going to be working on a memo next week, uh, for, uh. Yeah, I'll be working on a memo. Hopefully I'll be able to circulate, you know, prior to the next meeting. So I just wanted to let everyone, uh, let you know, Anna, that I haven't lost track of that.
Yeah. I, I had no change to the minutes.
I think there's some gaps in there that need to be, unless I got a. Peter brings it up.
Without further ado. Uh, here we are.
Just bring up the, the important things, um, line forty-eight. There's someone referred to as Joel and he needs a last name, so. And if that is that, I don't know who that is, so.
That, that's the applicant's attorney.
You know, in the analysis.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was Joel. I thought it said Joel when I read my sheet and I'm like, I didn't, I didn't notice a Joel. Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll make sure I get his correct name.
Okay. And then, um. Line sixty-five? Is highlighted or something?
Yep. Uh, sixty-five.
Oh, uh, it's, I saw it's now at sixty-four because something changed. That line, I just don't know what. Yeah, so line sixty-four. Remedian remediation was done at the floor drains. I, that just did not make sense to me about. Remediation done at the floor drains? I don't know what that, so I was just going to take it out because I.
I think what they meant is that the, the drains were, were sealed or they were closed after the, the testing was completed, isn't it? That's what I remember.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't recall that, so I didn't know.
I think there was a question from one of us that, that, that asked. If they were, they were still ongoing, the testing was still going and they said, no, that the, the testing was completed. I think the attorney said.
Great.
And, and the wells were, were sealed.
I'm just gonna highlight it and I'll go back and double check.
Yeah, yeah.
And then line thirty-three. But it might be a, one, one above it or something. Oh, sorry, no, I'm sorry, one thirty-three, sorry. One thirty-three. Um, so the line above it, line one thirty-two, special permit application to install net new equipment. Like. Is just new equipment?
Yeah, new equipment.
Okay. All right, and then the line below that. Kate Adams, the Crown Castle agent for the applicants, was in attendance and. And I don't know what she did. I guess it's just attendance period. Yeah, and that's all I have. Anyone else have anything? Okay. Then I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes at, of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, we'll call it out. Oh, where are we at?
Go ahead, Deepa. Anna Tesmenitsky, I.
I'm from Jersey, guy.
Oh, yeah, this is you, Kevin. You're on this. Yeah, Trisha Kendall, I, so. Are approved. Any general announcements from the board? All right, good. Then I will make a motion that we're adjourning at nine fifty-eight.
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, I.
I'm from Jersey, guy.
Yeah, and Trisha Kendall, I. Excellent. We made the ten o'clock. Enjoy it while it lasts, folks.
All right, I will be in contact with everybody and have a great weekend.
All right, good night.
Bye-bye.